Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. We are ready to begin this evening's board meeting. Sergeant at arms or designate as the front lobby bin attendant to ensure public access. Thank you. The school board meeting of May 24th, 2022 is now called to order. The time is 6:02. We would like to take this opportunity to remind the members of the public of the district mission, which is to ensure that each student achieves his or her highest personal potential and the district vision to be a world-class school system. Board member Patrica will be participating and voting by phone this evening pursuant to Board Policy 1.11. Ms. Patrica, are you with us? Ms. Patrica, are you with us online? Well, we'll make sure that she gets online, so when she does pop in, Ms. Thomas, maybe we can reach out. Thank you. This evening's agenda includes invocation, presentation of colors, and pledge of allegiance, recognitions, public comments, consent action items, which include one item under Board Office, five items under Executive Services, 21 items under Academics, six items under Business Services, five items under Human Resources, which one is good cause. Dr. Bernier, please provide an explanation for this one item.
Madam Chair, this matter is presented as good cause this evening so the district staff can implement the changes to the salary schedule necessitated by the tentative agreement with Spalk. These changes must occur prior to July 1st to comply with the agreement.
Thank you. As Presiding Officer, I find there is good cause to add this one item to the agenda. Two items under Information Systems, 22 items under Operations, one item under Leasing Corporation, and three items under Public Hearings. Board members, is there a motion to adopt the agenda?
I'll move to adopt the agenda as printed.
Thank you, Ms. Fisher. Thank you, Ms. Gittens. And please record your votes.
I don't think so. I didn't. I didn't receive electronic with.
Critical difficulties. We're waiting for.
Madam Chair, I'm able to call in now? My vote was yes.
And Ms. Patrica, are you online with us yet? Okay. I don't think she's here, so.
I'm here, Madam Chair.
Got it. Thank you.
Okay, it is 6:0 with one not present. Motion carries. I will introduce our guest.
Madam Chair, can you hear me?
I can hear you now, Ms. Patrica.
I've given them to vote yes several times.
Okay, thank you. So can we make the adjustments? It would be 7:0. Thank you, Ms. Patrica. Okay, I will. I will introduce our guest for the invocation, after which Ms. Vaughn will lead us in the presentation of colors and the pledge of allegiance. Our guests. Our guests, please stand. Our guest for the invocation is Pastor Michael A. Barnes, Senior, Pastor of Jerusalem Church of God in Christ in Fort Myers, Florida. Pastor Barnes, will you go ahead and step up here, please? Thank you. Pastor Barnes has been a minister for over 25 years. In 1997, he became the founder and pastor of Servants United in Christ Church in Fort Myers, Florida. In 2010, Pastor Barnes was selected to be the pastor of Jerusalem Church of God in Christ Church, also known also in Fort Myers, Florida. He is a graduate of Lee County School District Cape Coral High School of Class of 1983. He has been married to his lovely wife Mildred for 35 years. Together, they have five adult children, 17 grandchildren, and four great-grandsons. Pastor Barnes is also co-owner, along with his wife, of Mildred's To Go and Catering, located on 2282 Cranford Avenue in Fort Myers. Pastor Barnes's desire as a church is to be within the community, proclaiming the Word of Christ and providing good deeds whenever possible to the community. During the COVID-19 pandemic, Pastor Barnes spearheaded an in-house food distribution initiative, which provided home-cooked meals for church members to help out of time of needs. His community accomplishments have been the establishment of a community food bank that feeds families in times of necessities for children and their family members. The Food Distribution Outreach Initiative provides USDA fresh meats, vegetables, bread, toiletries, and other essential food items. Through the partnership of other churches, outreach ministries, business corporations, friends, and families, amongst his future vision, one is to establish a youth center that will help educate and motivate our youth of tomorrow. Pastor Barnes is a man who loves God, God's people, and His Word. He enjoys family times, relaxing, and learning whatever he can to share with others. He enjoys preaching and teaching the Word of God with power, conviction, and simplicity at every opportunity that avails without compromise. Welcome, Pastor Barnes.
Amen. Thank you. It's an honor to be here too this evening, but just before we pray, I just received word from Sister Jordan that there was a shooting in Texas, then we lost 14 children and one teacher. And with a heavy heart, we're gonna pray, but we're just asking everyone to pray for those families. Dear Heavenly Father, we come before You today, and with a heavy heart, God, we ask You to look on those families in Texas. We put them first in this prayer today because, Lord, no one knows the hurt like You know when they know at this time. And we pray that You would comfort those families right now that has suffered this loss, and we know that You're the only One that can give a peace that surpasses all understanding. Look on that school, look on that school district, and, God, look on that community. Strengthen them in this time. Lord, we know that You're able. And God, strengthen us in this room, oh God, to continue to pray for them during this time of bereavement. Now, Lord, as we pray for this particular meeting tonight, we ask Your blessings upon it. Lord, we want to thank You for every teacher that who have served this year and every employee of the school board. Lord, we thank You for our new superintendent, and, God, we ask that You would bless him in a mighty way. We ask that You would bless this board and give them wisdom, Lord, in every decision that they make, and I pray that You would make them one. Lord, I pray that You unify this board so they can do Your will. You have called them for such a time as this, so, Lord, let them remember that their decision affect their employees and then affect the children of this community, so, God, they have a great responsibility. Help them and give them strength. And, God, if You do these things, we will constantly give You the praise, and we ask these blessings in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor Barnes. Ms. Vaughn?
The cadet presenting the national colors tonight will be introduced by Lieutenant Colonel Barry C. Dickerson, the senior army instructor at Benita Springs High School. Lieutenant Colonel Dickerson retired from active-duty service in 2014 after 29 years of distinguished military service. He is a Desert Shield and Desert Storm veteran, completed multiple combat deployments to Baghdad, Iraq, and has been awarded three Bronze Star medals. Lieutenant Colonel Dickerson is in his eighth year of teaching in the school district, having spent his first four years at Eastly County High School. Welcome, Lieutenant Colonel, and thank you so much for your service.
Thank you very much, Ms. Vaughn. The national colors for our pledge of allegiance tonight will be presented by Cadet Colonel Ulyssa Garcia Martinez of the Benita Springs High School JROTC program. Cadet Colonel Garcia Martinez is the highest-ranking cadet leader in the Bull Shark Brigade and serves as the brigade commander of over 350 cadets. She is also the color guard commander and a member of the state qualifying Raiders team. Cadet Garcia Martinez holds the unique distinction of being the first-ever Lee County School District JROTC drone racing champion. Her pilot call sign is Hollywood. Cadet Garcia Martinez excels in the classroom as well, evidenced by her 4.7 GPA. Being the well-rounded student that she is, Cadet Garcia Martinez is a member of the school's band and earned a superior rating during the district's ensemble performance. Lastly, she was recently selected as the president of the high school's Best Buddies Club. After high school, Cadet Garcia Martinez plans to attend Florida A&amp;M University, participate in its ROTC program, and pursue a career as an officer in the United States Marine Corps. Ladies and gentlemen, please join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much.
Okay, please be seated. Okay, the student representative is Miguel Guerrero, a senior student from South Fort Myers High School. I have to say, a senior, he just graduated the other night, so congratulations. Should've said ex-senior. He is constantly involved with community and school with over 150 community service hours, serving as the secretary of the class of 2022. Varsity athletic in soccer and a member of the South Fort Myers Wolf Pack Brigade, commander of cyber patriot team, and the commander of the current Lee County, or was the current Lee County JROTC drones champion, member of the National Honor Society and a student council member of the College Reach Out Program with FGCU. Miguel has a deep curiosity for learning and enrich enriches himself at school by taking advanced classes and enriching electives and maintains a 4.6 grade point average. After high school, Miguel would like to pursue a career in bioengineering, starting at FGCU next fall. Correct? Okay. Also being accepted into the Honors College, currently working at one of the biggest bioengineer companies in the world, Arthrex. Please welcome Miguel Guerrero. Next, we will do recognitions, and I am going to turn this over to Miguel.
All right. Okay, tonight's recognitions are the following. The 2022 Black History Month Contest winner, the first LEGO League Challenge Team, the 2022 Sanction State Scholars, Florida Junior Thespian Lee County District Six, Florida Dance Educators Organization, and the 2022 RIDC World Competition. Board members, please take your places in the pitiful recognitions.
Do you have my? Thank you. I would like to invite Allen Park Elementary School Principal Lisa S. Eastridge to join me at the lectern. Governor Ron DeSantis announced the winners of the Black History Month Student Essay and Art Contest. Students from grades K through third were invited to participate in an art contest, and students in grades 4 through 12 were invited to participate in the essay contest. The theme of the year's contest was celebrating African-American contributions to Florida history. Zori Jackson, a third grader at Allen Park Elementary, who submitted her work titled "Future Donald's Legacy." The 2022 Black History Month Essay Contest asked students in grades 4 through 12 to write an essay of no more than 500 words based on this year's theme. Sorry, that was a repeat. I apologize for that one. The essay contest had three overall winners, who will each receive a four-year Florida College Plan Scholarship, provided by Florida Prepaid College Foundation. And I will say, we did this at the last meeting, however, the date, Zori had a different date on there, that's why we are redoing this. So if some people think that we have done this, we did do this for other students, but we wanted to make sure that she was represented as well and recognized. The school board and the superintendents are pleased to recognize Zori Jackson. Oh, no! Oh, she is here! Okay.
Next. Good evening. I would like to invite Paul Lawrence Dunbar Middle Principal Trent Eckard, Oak Hammock Middle Principal Jennifer McMillan Barnes, Allen Park Elementary Principal Lisa Eastridge, and Homeschool Assistant Principal Meredith Berry to please join me at the lectern. First, FOR INSPIRATION AND RECOGNITION OF SCIENCE AND TECHNOLOGY IS A ROBOTICS COMMUNITY THAT PREPARES YOUNG PEOPLE FOR THE FUTURE THROUGH A SUITE OF INCLUSIVE TEAM-BASED ROBOTICS PROGRAMS FOR AGES FOUR TO EIGHTEEN, PRE-K THROUGH TWELVE, THAT CAN BE FACILITATED IN SCHOOL OR IN STRUCTURED AFTER-SCHOOL PROGRAMS. Boosted by a global support system of volunteers, educators, and sponsors that include over 200 of the Fortune 500 companies, TEAMS OPERATE UNDER A SIGNATURE SET OF FIRST CORE VALUES TO CONDUCT RESEARCH, FUNDRAISE, DESIGN, BUILD, AND SHOWCASE THEIR ACHIEVEMENTS DURING ANNUAL CHALLENGES. An international not-for-profit organization, a 501(c)(3), founded by accomplished inventor Dean Kamen in 1989, FIRST HAS A PROVEN IMPACT ON STEM LEARNING, INTEREST, AND SKILL BUILDING WELL BEYOND HIGH SCHOOL. ALUMNIY OF FIRST PROGRAMS GAIN ACCESS TO EXCLUSIVE SCHOLARSHIPS, INTERNSHIPS, AND OTHER OPPORTUNITIES THAT CREATE CONNECTIONS AND OPEN PATHWAYS TO A WIDE VARIETY OF CAREERS. THE MISSION OF FIRST IS TO INSPIRE YOUNG PEOPLE TO BE SCIENCE AND TECHNOLOGY LEADERS AND INNOVATORS BY ENGAGING THEM IN EXCITING MENTOR-BASED PROGRAMS THAT BUILD SCIENCE, ENGINEERING, AND TECHNOLOGY SKILLS, THAT INSPIRE INNOVATION, THAT FORSTER WELL-ROUNDED LIFE CAPABILITIES, INCLUDING SELF CONFIDENCE, COMMUNICATION, AND LEADERSHIP. FIRST PARTICIPANTS ALSO DEVELOP SKILLS IN TEAMWORK, PROBLEM SOLVING, AND COMMUNICATION, PREPARING THEM FOR SUCCESS IN SCHOOL AND THE WORKFORCE, NO MATTER WHAT PATH THEY TAKE. AS I CALL OUT YOUR SCHOOL, WOULD EVERYONE FROM THE SCHOOL PLEASE COME FORWARD TO HAVE A GROUP PICTURE TAKEN? And we'll begin with Paul Lawrence Dunbar Middle School. Sebastian Augustenberg, 8th grade, Delaney Balcom, 8th grade, Nashini Fernando, 8th grade, Benjamin Morelou Dennis, 7th grade, and Nash Balcom, 6th grade. And now Oak Hammock Middle School, Ian Daeto. And for Allen Park Elementary School, Deera Shamar. And finally, from homeschool, Jake Cassai Hazencamp. Drew? Is he here? Okay, Drew. And Charles Dalton are this year's Lee County Sunshine State Scholars. Jasmine Max of Lehigh Senior High School and Yashvin Ramon of Riverdale High School were named as this year's alternates. In March, our Lee County Sunshine State Scholars, along with their parents, traveled to Orlando for a two-day program. There, they received recognition for their achievements, talked with STEM industry leaders about careers and internships, and met with representatives from Florida's colleges and universities to learn about programs of study and available scholarships. The school board and superintendent are pleased to recognize Alum Drew, did I say it right? Alum Drew, Charles Dalton, as this year's Lee County Sunshine State Scholars, as well as Jasmine Max and Yashvin Ramon as this year's alternates. We are proud of the accomplishments of these students and wish them the best in all of their future endeavors. Please come forward to have a group picture taken. I would like to invite Gulf Middle School Principal James Moreland and Veteran Park Academy for the Arts Principal Edwin Carter, to please join me at the lectern. The Florida Junior Thespians Annual State Festival was held January 14th and 15th, 2022, at the Orange County Convention Center in Orlando. Middle school students from Lee County School District attended and earned All-State Superior Awards in various areas. As I call out your school, would everyone from the school please come forward to have a group picture taken? Okay, first, from Gulf Middle School, Abigail Puesis? Ava Bernhardt, Karina Rafal, Miranda Mendeville, Shane Hernandez, and Victoria Clark. Gulf Middle School. And now, Veterans Park Academy for the Arts, Yosvani Silva. Please come forward. We would also like to acknowledge Challenger Middle School Principal Stacia Winfrey. They could not be here tonight due to competitions. The school board and superintendent are pleased to recognize and extend congratulations to all of these very talented students.
I would like to invite Cypress Lake High School Principal Angela Rolls, Lehigh Senior High Principal Jackie Corey, and North Fort Myers Academy for the Arts Principal Andrea Guns, to join me at the lectern. The Florida Dance Educators Organization held dance performance assessments, January 29th through the 30th, 2022, in Tampa. Students from Lee County attended and earned recognition and high honors as follows in various areas. As I call out your school, would you, would everyone come from the school and please come forward to have a group picture taken? Cypress Lake High School, all students in Cypress Lake High School. And the teachers, please. Now, Lehigh Senior High School, can you please all come down with the teachers as well, or instructors? Last but not least, North Fort Myers Academy for the Arts. The school board and the superintendent are pleased to recognize and extend congratulations to all these talented students. I would like to invite Cypress Lake High School Principal Angela Rolls, Lehigh Senior High Principal Jackie Corey, and North Fort Myers Academy for the Arts Principal Andrea Guns, to join me at the lectern. The Florida Dance Educators Organization held dance performance assessments, January 29th through the 30th, 2022, in Tampa. Students from Lee County attended and earned recognition and high honors as follows in various areas. As I call out your school, would you, would everyone come from the school and please come forward to have a group picture taken? Cypress Lake High School, all students in Cypress Lake High School. And the teachers, please. Now, Lehigh Senior High School, can you please all come down with the teachers as well, or instructors? Last but not least, North Fort Myers Academy for the Arts. The school board and the superintendent are pleased to recognize and extend congratulations to all these talented students. I would like to invite Cypress Lake High School Principal Angela Rolls, to join me at the lectern. After competing at the inaugural district, RADC, and I had to ask what this is and focus, robotic autonomous drone competition. The Cypress Lake, I'll say that again, robotic autonomous drone competition. The Cypress Lake High School JROTC Drone Team B qualified for the world competition. Team members include Team Captain and Pilot Cadet Corporal Nathan Nguyen, Team Spotter Cadet Sergeant Cariana Santiago, and Team Programmer Cadet Private Andre Ruiz. The final day of the world competition was very intense, with 68 teams competing for the coveted title of Best of RADC World 2022. The competition was a constant struggle for all teams, with the Cypress Lake team fluctuating between 4th and 19th place. Team B Captain Nguyen wisely chose alliance with West Virginia High School, Carver Monarchs, from Charleston, West Virginia, for their partner and made it to the finals. In the end, Cypress Lake JROTC ended up in 2nd place as the world finalist and placed 3rd in programming skills. Cypress Lake JROTC students worked hard during practices and competition to qualify for RADC World 22 competition. This experience has allowed them to meet students from across the U.S. and gain a wealth of knowledge that they would not otherwise have learned in the classroom. Team A from Cypress Lake is also present, led by Captain and Programmer Cadet Corporal Miguel Hernandez, Pilot Cadet Private Shosley Converse, and Spotter Cadet 2nd Lieutenant Jason Whitney. They placed 45th in the program and 56th overall in the world. Both teams worked diligently to develop their programming and flying skills, leading up to the RADC World Competition. Please come forward to have your picture taken. The recipients are Team Captain and Pilot Cadet Corporal Nathan Nguyen, Team Spotter Cadet Sergeant, let me let you hand these out, Team Spotter Cadet Sergeant Cariana Santiago, Programmer Cadet Private Andre Ruiz, Team Captain and Programmer Cadet Corporal Miguel Hernandez, and what is your name? I should introduce you guys. Major Provost Sergeant Major Ortega. Thank you. Okay, we're going to take a moment, so that way, for those who just were recognized, if they have the opportunity to leave. Let's give them all another hand, please. Okay, the next on the agenda is public comments. Ms. Dupree Bruno, please address the item of public comment.
Thank you, Madam Chair. School Board policy provides the opportunity at this point in the meeting to address the Board concerning any matter on this meeting's agenda, or any other matter relevant to the operation of the school district. If you completed a public comment card, please put it in the basket provided at the back of the room. If you need a public comment card, they are provided by our staff located in the hallway outside of the boardroom. The rules concerning public comment are posted in and will be made from the microphone in the back of the room. Please be advised that the Board will not respond during public comment to remarks made by speakers. Speakers and those attending the meeting are expected to act in a respectful manner. The purpose of public comment is to provide feedback on school district issues. Abusive language is prohibited. In addition, clapping, hissing, and booing, unreasonably loud and/or offensive language, swearing, cursing, or display of temper during the public comment period is prohibited. Speakers who fail to follow proper decorum in the chambers will be ruled out of order. Any speaker continuing with such remarks will be required to relinquish the microphone per Board Policy 1.11 and may be removed from the chambers. We will take recesses as necessary if there is not decorum in the chambers. Per Board Policy 1.11, the time per speaker is 3 minutes if there are 20, 2 if there are 30, and 1 if there are 31 or more. The maximum time allotted for public comment is 1 hour, 60 speakers. You will find a countdown on the big screen in the front of the room. Once your time has elapsed, the microphone will automatically shut off. Please state your name when you approach the microphone. I will call your names five speakers at a time. Please follow staff's direction when lining up. Madam Chair, there are 10 speakers that wish to address the Board this evening, 3 minutes per speaker.
Thank you. Please make sure that you have completed a public comment card if you intend to provide public comments. The card is a public record identifying those who speak and providing contact information to staff for follow-up. The cards are located with the staff in the hallway. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to address the Board but did not fill out a comment card? Please raise your hand.
I would like to invite Cypress Lake High School Principal Andrew Rolls to join me at the lectern. After competing at the inaugural district, RADC, and I had to ask what this is and focus, robotic autonomous drone competition. The Cypress Lake, I'll say that again, robotic autonomous drone competition. The Cypress Lake High School JROTC Drone Team B qualified for the world competition. Team members include team captain and pilot cadet corporal Nathan Nguyen, team spotter cadet sergeant Carriana Santiago, and team programmer cadet private Andre Ruiz. The final day of the world competition was very intense, with 68 teams competing for the coveted title of best of RADC World 2022. The competition was a constant struggle for all teams, with the Cypress Lake team fluctuating between 4th and 19th place. Team B captain Nguyen wisely chose alliance with West Virginia High School Carver Monarchs from Charleston, West Virginia for their partner and made it to the finals. In the end, Cypress Lake JROTC ended up in 2nd place as the world finalist and placed 3rd in programming skills. Cypress Lake JROTC students worked hard during practices and competition to qualify for RADC World 22 competition. This experience has allowed them to meet students from across the US and gain a wealth of knowledge that they would not otherwise have learned in the classroom. Team A from Cypress Lake is also present, led by captain and programmer cadet corporal Miguel Hernandez, pilot cadet private Shosley Converse, and spotter cadet 2nd lieutenant Jason Whitney. They placed 45th in the program and 56th overall in the world. Both teams worked diligently to develop their programming and flying skills leading up to the RADC World Competition. Please come forward to have your picture taken. The recipients are team captain and pilot cadet corporal Nathan Nguyen, team spotter cadet sergeant, let me let you hand these out, team spotter cadet sergeant Carriana Santiago, programmer cadet private Andre Ruiz, team captain and programmer cadet corporal Miguel Hernandez, and what is your name? I should introduce you guys. Major Provost Sergeant Major Ortega. Thank you. Okay, we're going to take a moment so that way for those who just were recognized if they have the opportunity to leave. Let's give them all another hand, please. Okay, the next on the agenda is public comments. Ms. DePree Bruno, please address the item of public comment.
Thank you, Madam Chair. School Board policy provides the opportunity at this point in the meeting to address the Board concerning any matter on this meeting's agenda or any other matter relevant to the operation of the school district. If you completed a public comment card, please put it in the basket provided at the back of the room. If you need a public comment card, they are provided by our staff located in the hallway outside of the boardroom. The rules concerning public comment are posted in and will be made from the microphone in the back of the room. Please be advised that the Board will not respond during public comment to remarks made by speakers. Speakers and those attending the meeting are expected to act in a respectful manner. The purpose of public comment is to provide feedback on school district issues. Abusive language is prohibited. In addition, clapping, hissing, and booing, unreasonably loud and/or offensive language, swearing, cursing, or display of temper during the public comment period is prohibited. Speakers who fail to follow proper decorum in the chambers will be ruled out of order. Any speaker continuing with such remarks will be required to relinquish the microphone per Board Policy 1.11 and may be removed from the chambers. We will take recesses as necessary if there is not decorum in the chambers. Per Board Policy 1.11, the time per speaker is 3 minutes if there are 20, 2 if there are 30, and 1 if there are 31 or more. The maximum time allotted for public comment is 1 hour, 60 speakers. You will find a countdown on the big screen in the front of the room. Once your time has elapsed, the microphone will automatically shut off. Please state your name when you approach the microphone. I will call your names five speakers at a time. Please follow staff's direction when lining up. Madam Chair, there are 10 speakers that wish to address the Board this evening, 3 minutes per speaker.
Thank you. Please make sure you have completed a public comment card if you intend to provide public comments. The card is a public record identifying those who speak and providing contact information to staff for follow-up. The cards are located with the staff in the hallway. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to address the Board but did not fill out a comment card? Please raise your hand. Okay, I'm going to ask again. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to address the Board but did not fill out a comment card? Okay, Ms. DePree Bruno, please proceed.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Will the following individuals please line up? Kathy Stout, Kathy Horn, Keith Olson, Denise Nystrom, Jerry Ware.
Good evening. Just a second, Ms. DePree Bruno, is it working now, the clock? Because it was not working this afternoon. I just want to make sure before she begins. Oh, yes.
Thank you.
Can we, Ms. Thomas, can we?
Oh, there it goes. Okay, thank you. Good evening, Kathy Stout. Dr. Bernier, welcome. I have a question for everyone on the Board. Don't you agree a yearbook should be about children and all their achievements, awards, sports, dances? Don't you think it should be about them and them only? Recently has come to my attention that many concerned parents, along with students, in North Fort Myers High School allowed a very highly political message promoting non, I'm sorry, home sexuality and transgenderism without even notifying parents. This became very personal to a lot of us, including the parents and the students. There were two pages that uses children as a mouthpiece to advance a message of radical sexual politics while attacking our governor. Public schools should be, and I quote, "a place of education, not introduction," and only schools' curriculums and yearbooks should not be used to push controversial political positions that violate the religious and ethical beliefs of many parents and students in taxpayer-funded schools or school sponsors forums. I agree with Dr. Bernier to approach the cabinet meeting moving forward. During your meeting, I advise that all of you please do discuss the future yearbooks that all yearbooks you do publish in the future should be nonpolitical and stick to children achievement, awards, sports, and them having fun. Not all children believe in what you did in their yearbooks, and it should remain freedom of speech, as we all know, about all opinions and not just one. We need to include all children who believe in everything that they choose and not in their yearbooks. So this was very, very personal for a lot of people. And I'm also watching a few things too. You know, I know moving forward, you all have different issues, and I do believe that things will be a little bit better. I don't think a lot. But I really have to say that watch what you're spending, because I don't believe in spending a lot of money on hand sanitizers. The other thing too, we need to put that money back into our teachers, bus drivers, because a lot of them are quitting before the fall even begins. So I would really look into that. Thank you.
Good evening. Hi, I'm Kathy Horn. I want to welcome Dr. Bernier, congratulate the school board on all the successes of the graduating seniors. It seemed like an awful lot of things, and Debbie Jordan in your op-ed, a lot of wonderful achievements by the students noted, so thank you for that. I want to counterbalance the calls for God in our schools. To quote a recent Facebook post, "The founders wrote the Constitution, not the Apostles. They added the Bill of Rights, not the Ten Commandments. Their intent was freedom of religion, not control by religion. They created a democracy, not a theocracy." Thank you for remembering that your students come from a variety of religious and nonreligious backgrounds. I want to thank you for understanding that LGBTQ students deserve the support of their teachers and administrators. Attempts by Christians to shame them, change them, deny their existence, and deny their safety in schools are the real reason behind high suicide rates for these students. Many Christians and other religious people support this community and recognize these students are created by God to be exactly who they are. The very idea of grooming or that exposure to LGBTQ support would make students gay is either an uneducated view or a deliberate attempt to force religious belief upon the entire student population. Thank you for fighting that ignorance. I want to ask certain board members what they mean when they say things like, "This Board is a terrible Board," or "We just can't get along." Is it not obvious to you that you are the Board, and thus you are saying, "I am terrible and I can't get along with others?" And that pointing that out to the public is self-defeating, immature, and detrimental. You say you want to forget the past and move forward, but you keep bringing up the past and rehashing old grievances. Please stop. It's painful to watch. And I want to speak in support of Ms. Patrica. In meeting after meeting after meeting, she is accused of a wide variety of illegal, mean-spirited, evil acts, as if she were some kind of Putin-esque Machiavellian figure. In defiance of your own rules of behavior, she is called out by name and falsely accused of things of which she has already been proven innocent. In three years of watching Board meetings, I have never seen Ms. Patrica show any public disrespect for her colleagues or even stoop to defend herself against this constant public lashing. She has been a consummate professional the entire time, simply using her comments to discuss Board matters, not interpersonal grievances. I wish all of you would do the same. Then, and only then, you might find yourselves a Board that isn't so terrible. Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Keith Olson. I'm going to start by saying that different views probably shouldn't be judged as ignorant just because they're different. I first became aware of critical theory as a psychotherapist in San Diego during the 1970s, 1980s. And narrative therapy was one of those theories. It was based on this philosophy. It was used to help victims of domestic violence, child abuse, child sexual abuse, and rape to change the meaning of the violence that they had experienced. Guilt and shame was transferred from them to the perpetrator. Experiencing themselves as victims changed to see themselves as victors over the perpetrator and his or her violence. This was great. However, now, critical theory is being used not to change to the positive, but to destroy our culture. It causes people to deconstruct or tear down beliefs, knowledge, history, and perceptions, and then to reconstruct or create new beliefs, pseudo-knowledge, pseudo-history, and new perceptions. Critical theory is the basis of critical race theory. It tears down the belief that all people are created by God as equal in His sight, as taught by Martin Luther King Jr. It replaces this truth with the false belief that our inherited race makes us either an oppressor white person or an oppressed non-white person. As it permeates education and other social institutions, our children and grandchildren are taught to feel guilt, shame, anger, and rage. Gender ideology is the insidious movement that is undermining the scientific determination of male and female. It is also a product of critical theory. The genetic, biological, and anatomical facts of sex and gender identify our identity determination are replaced with emotion, sense of uncertainty, fear, and anxiety. Throughout development, especially during pre-adolescence and adolescence, some gender questioning and even mild gender dysphoria are common. The vast majority of youth who are supported in their biological sex identification mature into healthy, well-adjusted men and women. The transgender movement distorts healthy psychosexual development into premature labeling, often with peer pressure and adult intrusion. The most egregious traumas are inflicted through hormone blockers, hormone therapy, and surgical mutilation.
Will the following individuals please line up? Sharon McGill, Jen Wadi, Tara Jenner, Robert Roper, Kristy Dividelli.
Denise Nystrom. I would like to address three items this evening. Another shooting where children have died. Nothing could be more sad. In light of this recent incident in Texas, perhaps the Board should again look at the Guardian Program, a program that can save the lives of children. We're talking about a program where highly skilled individuals in our schools are armed. One only has to train with guns to understand that it's a skill, and many people are highly skilled in this area. I believe it could save lives. Where is the district with regard to hiring an internal auditor? It seems like it was months ago that the Board discussed that RSM would be willing to re-enter into a contract with the district. It must be over a year since the district has had an auditor. If someone could please let us know where we are in that process, I would be grateful. Regarding the codes of conduct, during one of the last three Board meetings, I stated that last year, when the Board was asked to place the Parents' Bill of Rights in the codes of conduct, the Board stated that they did not have enough time because the codes would be late in going to print. I asked that since this subject is getting brought up earlier this year, was the Board going to get in front of the issue? Instead of approving the codes of conduct tonight, be ready to put into Board policy an updated Parents' Bill of Rights policy directly after it goes into effect after July 1st. Have the information ready to be placed in the code of conduct, and then it can go into print. Thank you.
Good evening. Jerry Ware, to school board members, to Dr. Bernier, and to Attorney Bruno. I'm wondering why, at the end of each meeting, that each school board member has a tendency to cite the different events that they have attended. While this might be significant, I think it would be of more significance if you were to share what you have done to improve the quality of the education of our students' education, what has been done with our budget, what has been done for our school bus drivers. These are significant things that should be shared with us more so than what you attended. I had the distinct pleasure of reading Dr. Bernier's file, and I am looking forward to you, charging you to create some change, utilizing the skill set that I really, really adhere to with dissenagism. I would like for us to return to the podium down in the front, creating some cohesiveness. I would also like for us to be able to participate in the dialogue at workshops, because the only dialogue you have here is 3 minutes. I would like also for the school board members to tell us what you've done in your communities, what you've done with constituents, because there's a lack of community participation. These are some of my concerns. So I'm asking you this evening, if you would, please, as opposed to telling me what graduation you went to, tell me what difference did you make? What change did you create? Thank you very much for the opportunity to share with you.
Good evening. Sharon McGill. Good evening, Board members, Attorney Bruno, and welcome, Dr. Bernier. And if Dr. Savage is in the room, thank you for your service and your continued service through the next year. As a community stakeholder, not running for office of any kind or affiliated with any kind of organization, I listened closely yesterday to the self-evaluations. And with all due respect to everybody on the Board, and no individual persons identified, here was my take on that. You are the face and the voice of the school district, managing $2 billion budget, being one of the largest employers in the county, and representing 95,000 students. Any personal issues or animosity should be checked at those doors when you walk in this room, which it often is not. Please, agree to disagree. We all do that. It's how we live our lives. And if a vote or anything else does not go your way, you should be above taking it as a personal affront. It was interesting that dignity and respect were important among Board members, and yet you repeatedly allow disrespectful behavior from audience members, even though rules of participation are clearly stated. I would hope the process of requesting public records is reviewed and becomes more efficient and transparent. Having submitted public records requests with no acknowledgement or response does not build confidence in transparency. A section on the agenda called "Follow-Up," or if you want to use the unfinished business, would be helpful in keeping the public informed of ongoing items. Examples, the hurricane reimbursement from Lee County. What's the status of that? The status of reimbursement for the questionable scholarship funds from the state? And the most recent book charges that were all over the media? What's the status on that? I just want to say, I support the tenants and public education wholeheartedly. So many amazing things happen in the district that the public doesn't hear about. You are missing out on a tremendous opportunity to engage and educate the public and get them involved. The only reason I know about everything that's going on is because I'm here for basically every meeting. Thank you.
Tara Jenner. During the last school board meeting, I was removed for walking up to speak from one of the side microphones. I immediately offered to relocate to the back microphone, but was informed that "they" wanted me removed. I would like to know first and foremost who "they" are. I also request a formal apology for my unwarranted removal, which prevented me from asserting my rights to peaceably assemble, and petition you, the elected officials, for a redress of grievance, as guaranteed under the Fourth Amendment of the United States Constitution, and further to instruct my representatives, as secured by the Florida State Constitution under Article 1, Section 5. By the way, I was not offered a warning, and I have never been told, even on any prior occasion, that I would be removed if I continued with my quote "behavior." Secondly, as a homeschool mom who speaks four languages and has a law degree, is licensed and retired out of the state of Texas, I offer the following English language and arts observation. The district attorney who read the public comment information referenced Board Policy 1.11, wherein there is nothing, zip, nada, referencing the location from which public comments must be made. Additionally, she read, quote, "The rules for public comment are posted and will be read from the microphone in the back of the room," just as she did tonight. Diagramming sentences helps evaluate sentence structure. In this case, the subject of the sentence is the rules and not the public comment. Hence, it is the rules which will be posted and will be made from the back microphone, not the public comment, according to the admonition given by the Board Attorney. Disparate treatment should never be supported or condoned. By the way, this public comment update is found on your agenda items, but it is not found anywhere in the formal school board policies. It's actually incorrectly titled COVID Policy. We were told by our board attorney it was for security reasons now, but it's actually listed as a public comment information. As I said a minute ago, disparate treatment should never be condoned. This is along the lines of saying that we should shut up and be happy about sitting in the back of the bus, something that Rosa Parks fought against, and I'm doing likewise in this situation. I didn't go up there tonight because I knew I'd get pulled out. You're signaling that we're less worthy and a threat. Really? Let that sink in for a bit, and you'll see why I'm adamantly adverse to speaking from this location. Offer three microphones, and people may choose. And then as a side, I have a hearing impairment. I need to be up closer than those first third row. I can't hear half the time what you're doing. I lip read, and from back here, I can't see your facial expressions.
Good evening, Kristy Divageli. So I wasn't sure what I was going to say today, because I have a few things. I'm going to first start with agenda item. What is this? I don't know what agenda item it is. It's the approval to piggyback University of California, RFP, UC system-wide, for $500,000. And it says, "University of California for Maintenance, Repair, and Operations, Supplies, and Related Services was awarded to Fastenal Company for the period of July 2018 through June 30th, 2023. This contract supports purchase of gallons of hand sanitizer, face shields, social distancing decals, partitions, and other PPE materials that may be required." I would like some clarification on that, and why we would need that $500,000 worth. The next one is an approval to piggyback U.S. Community City of Kansas, Missouri Contract for Utility Transportation Golf Vehicles. That one is for $120,000. And same thing, same question. Why, I'd like to know why, first of all, we're going out to out-of-state, and why we're not finding places like this that could vendors in-state that can provide these services to us, but I'd still just like to know why we need $500,000 for gallons worth of hand sanitizer. And then the comment that was made before about, you know, too much religion in schools and government. I have a book here. It's called "A Glorious Standard for All Mankind," written by Christopher S. Bentley. It's filled with hundreds, I mean hundreds, of people throughout our history who are speaking about our great Constitution, our great United States of America, and how it was God-inspired, the whole thing. So, you know, if you want a copy of that, I have it here for you. And then the last thing is, I was just added recently to a Facebook group, and I'm very grateful that I was added to it, because it's a group where there's a lot of bus drivers in it. And there, even though I know that Spalk just agreed on a contract, and you know, you guys are, I think, approving it tonight or whatever, but I have like five different emails in here from employees that they've decided to post and share, saying that they're still leaving, and that they've sent in their notice because they still don't feel appreciated. They don't feel like, here's one of them, it says, "It's just the same thing. Those of us who've been here for seven years will learn the same as a new employee. What a lack of respect." Another one, "Yeah, this is real fair. Rookie off the street gets the same as a driver that's been here for at least three years or more. Go transportation." And if I went back even a few more weeks, like here's another one. So if this is correct, I'm currently at 1721, with 21 years' experience, nine of those in this district, and I am going to get a 29-cent raise to 1750, same as the new drivers. Makes decisions even easier for me. I mean, that would make decisions easier for me, too. I know that these things take time, but please, please look into them. Thank you.
Robert Roper. Welcome, Dr. Bernier. I appreciate your coming to Lee County and wish you the best. The previous school board superintendent had a email address that's called Concerns. And so, if a citizen sends in a concern, you hear back from Concerns with how it's going to be addressed. But you cannot email back that Concerns. I'd like you to look into that, because of all the email responses I got from Concerns, they never followed up on anything, and you can't email Concerns back. Second thing has to do with the ad hoc committee meeting. It's a meeting to address potentially objectionable materials, and there's an anomaly with that committee, and that is, all the decisions are made, and then public comment is received. That's probably not the best way to do it if you really want public comment. I would suggest that each book be presented as a motion, and you use the same rules you use here. Once a motion is made, then public comment is allowed, either for or against that particular material. Lastly, I've been reminded a number of times from the board chair that the board is nonpartisan. There's no politics in the board, and therefore, there's no politics in the classroom. Yet, in North Fort Myers, there was a very serious protest that was objectionable. In fact, I believe it violated the Lee County School Board's nondiscrimination policy, because it was highly objectionable to the religious community, and it was very political. I don't know if they're taking their lead from the board, because there was a board workshop where the lawmakers were disparaged, that they called the parental rights bill, the "Don't Say Gay" bill, which is politically charged. But even in this North Fort Myers protest and subsequent documentation in their school yearbook, it says "We Say Gay." That is political in nature. Most of that comes from our influence from Equality, Florida. It's a huge mistake. All students deserve support. And we should probably figure out how to manage students, teach them to respect law and the governor, and not slander the governor the way this was done. If we can't figure out how before the Supreme Court announces on abortion, you may have protests on both sides of that, and it could very well get out of hand. Thank you.
Madam Chair, that concludes public comment.
Thank you. Okay, I'm going to go through a few of these. First of all, again, thank you so much for all of you who are attending and speaking to us. I know I say this every meeting. We do appreciate you coming here, and we do hear what you're saying. I did want to mention, I was going to say this earlier, but regarding Spalk. So our Spalk will be coming up for the agreement, and this is the, I made some notes earlier, so that way I have my thoughts right. We, the overall increase for Spalk employees has been the highest that it ever has been right now. And I know there were some numbers that were spoken about here. We cannot get into that. And I know Dr. Bernier may speak on this a little bit at the end, so I'm going to leave that for him to speak on. But I just wanted to say that there was a question regarding our auditors. RSM, they have been with us for quite some time now. We have an audit committee. RSM has been in place for, and I can't recall how many months now, but they are here. We're moving forward with working with them, and I just wanted to make sure that that was clarified. The yearbook, regarding the yearbook, that is a student publication that is memorializing the events of the past school year. It is important that we remember, too, that the yearbook was reviewed, and it took place prior to the Parental Rights in Education bill was signed. So when that was approved and looked upon, that was well before that law had come in. And then you have Tinker versus DeMoyes, which states that "Students do not shed their constitutional rights to freedom of speech or expression at the schoolhouse gates." However, we did, as the district, put a statement in the yearbook. A sticker was placed on that page, which stated, "This is a student publication memorializing events of the past school year. The content does not express the views of the school district, which follows all applicable laws." So I wanted to make sure that that was out there and understood for, as far as that is concerned. The other question is, why do we share events and things that we do? We are sharing that is because that is what we're doing out there in the events. Perhaps we should get into more details on what that, and what that looks like, on our being in these locations, and what the good that that's doing with the schools, and how we're helping when we're there. So I thank you for that comment, and I know going forward, I will definitely work harder in sharing more information regarding that. And the follow-up, I thought that was very good as well, and Dr. Bernier, maybe that's something that we can look at as well. So going forward, and as far as the email concerns, and I know that you were taking notes on that one, about responding. Thank you. Okay, so seeing that, we will move on to the approval of the consent action items. The next is the approval of action items in the agenda under consent. The documentation for action items listed under consent is made available to board members seven business days prior to the board meeting. We are expected to review all the materials, and we have an opportunity to speak with the superintendent with any questions we may have regarding the recommendations. Some of these items have been also briefed or workshopped with the board in advance of appearing on the action agenda. Board members, are there any agenda items you wish to pull for discussion under unfinished business table items portion of the agenda? Ms. Fisher?
Following the review of the agenda yesterday, I have no pulls this evening.
Thank you. Ms. Giavennelli?
I have none.
Thank you. Ms. Patrica?
No, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Kittens?
I have none.
Ms. Vaughn?
Yes, I will be pulling F1.
Thank you. Ms. Morgan?
I have none.
And I have none. Is there a motion to approve the agenda consent items with the exception of F1?
I'll move to approve the consent agenda with the exception of F1.
Thank you, Ms. Fisher. May I have a second? Ms. Morgan?
I'll second.
Thank you. And please record your votes. Ms. Patrica, are you able to record yours?
Yes, ma'am, I can vote online.
Thank you. Ms. Thomas, has everybody voted? Thank you. Seven zero, motion carries. Thank you. Dr. Bernier, please introduce any administrators in attendance with a new assignment that were approved under the consent agenda.
Madam President, we have three appointments that were covered on consent under Human Resources. The first is Megan DeRoso. She will be joining us in Curriculum Instruction Innovation. She is a curriculum and instruction secondary from the District Mathematics Coast Coordinator of Teaching and Learning. We have Danielle Knapp. She will also become a curriculum and instruction innovation secondary specialist, and she is coming from the district content specialist to coordinator for teacher and learning. Finally, join Marx from North Fort Myers Academy for the Arts, Assistant Principal to Curriculum and Instruction Innovation, elementary coordinator to teaching and learning elementary coordinator, helping us with our focus project. She is not here this evening.
Thank you. Okay, we have F1 pulled to address. Dr. Bernier, please read your recommendation for pull item F1.
Madam Chair, F1, Approval to Renew ITN Number N, sorry, Number N, sorry. Let me go back one more time. Item F1, Approval to Renew ITN Number N177293RC for branding, awarded to Priority Marketing of Fort Myers for the third and final renewal period of June 6, 2022 through June 5 of 2023, at the estimated expenditure of $412,740 pursuant to the same terms and conditions as previously approved by the board. Approval authorizes the superintendent to execute all related documents.
Thank you. Is there a motion to adopt Dr. Bernier's recommendation? Ms. Morgan?
Excuse me, I move we approve Dr. Bernier's recommendation to approve renewal of ITN Number N177293RC branding.
Thank you. May I have a second, please? Thank you, Ms. Fisher. So it has been moved by Ms. Morgan and seconded in by Ms. Fisher. Any discussion? And I will start with you, Ms. Vaughn, please?
Yes. This was, this was something that was discussed yesterday in our workshop, and I listened carefully to all that was said, and actually have received, actually, all of us on the board received additional information this afternoon from the superintendent's office. After reading the additional information and some other, pulling some other research that I have, I am still opposed to this amount of money being spent. First of all, the ask is for almost $413,000. And yes, I do understand what budgeting means. Doesn't mean, as was pointed out to educate me yesterday, which I already knew, that budgeting doesn't mean every cent is going to be spent. However, it has been my experience on the board that when big-ticket items are brought up after something has been budgeted, that it's a typical question, is this a budgeted expense? And somehow, the answer, yes, it's budgeted, kind of accelerates the idea, oh, it's budgeted, we can spend it. The amount of almost $413,000 that's budgeted is more than double the amount from prior years. And I have some additional information, and I'm going to be quoting here and there from a story covered on April 4, 2022, by Peter Fleischer of Wink News. And it includes, actually, both sides. It includes information about this particular, how some of this money has been used, let's put it that way, how some of this money has been used. Now, I did ask yesterday at the workshop about specifics with how it was used for social media, because it has been an issue that has been brought up in this, from this board before, and also in this news report. To quote, and here's something that I'm adding that was not discussed at all yesterday, there has been controversy around a portion of the money that has been spent on social media monitoring. And, and I double-checked to make sure this was still accurate information, I double-checked it at about 41,000. I double-checked it at about quarter till six. There is an active investigation currently going on. To quote from Wink News, "A whistleblower complaint filed in February claims communication staff was instructed to quote spy unquote on Facebook posts and comments about the district while on the clock, potentially being paid taxpayer dollars to use taxpayer resources to spy on taxpayers." And there are other comments here. Let's see. Wake County School District Director of Strategic Communication, Ms. Irma Lancaster, according to this report, said, quoted to Mr. Peter Fleischer, that one of the top three services that is used in communication has been media monitoring. And this would be part of the money that would be used for this renewed contract with Priority Marketing. Some of the other things, and I've questioned this, I'm a big advocate for when we can do something in-house, we need to do it in-house because we have lots of very, very skilled people that can do some of these jobs. Now, yes, there are some jobs that perhaps are too time-consuming, not cost-effective for someone in-house to work on as a project. But looking at the list that I got, all of us got late this afternoon, I continue to question some of these things. For instance, Priority Marketing doing press releases. I know that we have skilled writers that can do press releases. Yesterday, one of the big things that was mentioned is, oh, we need to for new schools, we need to develop logos. In the information I got today, it said, all right, the new logos and branding. We have branding. It hasn't, it wasn't done so many years ago. We have already existing templates that, for instance, if I as a board member wanted to, let's say I wanted to illustrate something to my board colleagues and I wanted to use the PowerPoint template from the district, I can go online and there it is. We have plenty of those things. Obviously, we've had a change in superintendent. I'm not sure how difficult it is to switch out names. As a matter of fact, I believe that that's already been done. Of course, I don't know if it was done by Priority Marketing or if we managed to do that in-house. Some other things, refreshing the marketing material, a list of schools. One school expenditures, South Fort Myers High School, $80,000. That's a lot of money. $80,000 for what? For brochures? Lots of, you know, I could I could go on and list all the different kinds of brochures, et cetera. Anticipation expenditures, approximately $211,500. Grants department, marketing funds. Finally, to round off to that 400, almost $413,000, another miscellaneous $50,000. One more time, I'm going to say, please, board colleagues, do not educate me on what it means to budget. I understand what it needs to budget. I also, although I'm not a big mathematics scholar, I know what more than double is. I have confidence that there are people in this school district that can accomplish these things, especially since many of these things, and I'm going to cite the branding right now, are already in existence. And again, as I said earlier, when it's budgeted, it tends to be spent when it comes up in front of the board. This is why I will not be supporting this consent item tonight.
Thank you, Ms. Vaughn. Ms. Morgan, please?
Yeah, so first of all, for the public, I would like them to understand that the reason the budget doubled is because the grants department obtained a grant for $211,000. And so those funds will be expended in support of the new schools that we're building and new programs. I think Ms. Vaughn is really questioning whether or not we have confidence that the superintendent has processes in place to ensure that funding and support of schools is equitable. But that is, that's independent to me of approving the budget. I believe that we have been spending a little over $200,000 a year for the for the past two years. If there are questions about the way that money has been spent, then we need to look at the procedures that we have in place to make certain that we're not the money is being spent in a way that is is an effective resource, especially for the schools. So I will be supporting this because I do believe that these are essential. These represent opportunities for the district to better educate the public, the parents, schools, and us. So as I said, I think we need to look at the protocols that go with this. But I am confident in the work of the staff with respect to this item.
Thank you. Ms. Gittens?
I've for a long time had a question in my mind about what branding really is. And I do not attempt to be a professional in marketing or anything of that sort. But I've, you know, had some experience in a project I personally was involved in and someone trying to sell me branding for something I'd already done. I just, I don't have a lot of faith in in the process of branding. I understand branding. I understand we have our logo and all the wonderful things that make every time someone sees that, they know that it's us. But I also feel that at times, maybe we need to step back and look at how that money is being spent. In good times, branding is wonderful. We change the colors, we add color coding here and there, and all of that's great. But I don't know. I just feel like it just it just needs to be looked at and looked into a little bit more carefully as to is it the best use of this money at this time? And I understand that when they're doing grants and all these types of things at different schools, that they do the marketing package and everything matches and all the colors and but I guess I go back to old school and say, before there was branding, we still had grants. And how did we get the grants across the line? How did we get things, you know, people to understand what's what's going on? I just feel a little iffy about how much money we spent on various things at various times. If it were a different time and place, we had the money, perhaps. I just, I don't know.
Ms., I was going to ask Ms. Patrica. Ms. Patrica, do you have any comments on this?
May I direct a question to Dr. Bernier through the chair?
Yes.
Thank you. Dr. Bernier, are we contracting through this contract with Priority Marketing to monitor social media?
We do not have a provision within this contract to monitor social media, no.
Okay, thank you. Our communication staff is really amazing. I know that I commented recently to the board table about the fact that, you know, sometimes I watch their podcasts or I watch a video that they put together and it puts a lump in my throat because I I think they do a great job of telling our story to the extent that their resources permit them to do so. They are amazing, but they lack resources to handle all of this work. I think that asking them to do more without appropriate resources, both financially and human, is really untenable. And I feel like denying this recommendation tonight is the equivalent of asking them to fix a problem caused by a lack of resources by spreading their already scant resources even thinner. I will definitely be supporting this recommendation tonight. Thank you, those are my comments.
Thank you. Ms. Fisher?
So in looking at the information that we were provided, the paragraph regarding the anticipated expenditures of approximately $211,500 grants department. So a portion of the Idear Magnet grant is for advertising and marketing to attract a diverse student population. And then the grant description says, marketing costs, social media, TV, billboard, radio ads, mailers, brochures, and signs. The awarded schools utilize marketing funds for new logos and branding as well as advertising or updating and refreshing marketing materials. So I guess I just want to clarify that it appears that that money comes from the grant, not from the district general fund. So so that would account for the doubling in amount from from last year, say. And and that that the grant has to be followed per the directions that they're given or or you lose it. So I I just wanted to bring that to light because then we really have not had an increase in money from the district that's being spent budgeted.
Thank you, Ms. Fisher. Ms. Giavennelli?
I'll go. Thank you. So my concern is we have an we have an open position for the director of communications or and it may not be a director of communications or chief of communications. I'm not sure what Dr. Bernier has planned for that department. So that would be one question I would raise, you know, the hiring of that to to fill an opening because I hear that communications is shorthanded. So, you know, what direction would that director want? And would they go per this grant? I guess the grant designates these schools and then that's how this money is broke down. How, because my concern is the how this is not quite equitable. And then, second, we have allegations pending for that department. And so I would recommend waiting until those are resolved. Third, schools would have their own budgeting, I would think, and some of this would fall under that. And how does that actually compare? You know, because I think that should be equitable across the, I mean, across the district. I mean, you have middle schools and you got elementary schools getting more than middle schools. And so I that that part is really a little bit concerned. And then I get you need money to start up a new school and brand it and everything like that. So but none of these schools are the new schools in place or that we're that that's that's we know that we're going to have. So that, for me, knowing that there's a new school, where they, where do they fit in the picture of the grant? So those would be the things that I would question and why I have I'm having a hard time supporting it based on just knowing those things. Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Yes, please.
Ms. Giavennelli, make sure I have these right. We wanted to talk about the chief of communications.
Thank you.
We wanted to talk about the costs not being equitable. And we wanted to talk about that equal but not equitable but not equal, sorry. And then we also wanted to talk about the branding for the new schools. So let me begin with the chief of communications. There's a person who left our organization prior to me coming on board. She was paid at the executive level. In order to afford the position that we put Dr. Savage in, those dollars were taken and provided to the chief strategy officer position. So technically, we do not have a vacancy right now for chief of communications. Do I believe a chief of communications is a pretty solid hire for a district of this size? I do, but we are not in the process right now of any type of revisioning of our structures. So that answers that first one. In terms of the different costs for different schools, I think it's important for me, and I'm just trying to remind myself, our schools compete for enrollment. And specifically, this $211,500 was part of a grant that was specifically written so our schools who are competing for enrollment have the opportunity to market their programs. Branding is a process of creating a strong, positive perception of that school. It doesn't necessarily mean rebranding or anything like that, but it does mean a consistent competitive market presence. And as you drive down, heck, I just forgot the name of it, it turns into Rip Parkway Metro. If you drive up Metro towards the office from down on Alaco, you'll pass a very large billboard that has South Fort Myers very prominently displayed. It's part of how they attract students. So equitable is never equal. There are schools that need more, there are schools that need less. This grant was written competitively and we were awarded it. As to the new school, if you'll notice under that same area of $211,500, that bullet, actually, I believe, should be drawn in slightly. There's $50,000 set aside for other school department and locations as needed, and that potentially would give us the dollars to work within a Montessori. I don't think they would need all of it. And again, just a reminder, this is a budget. I know Ms. Vaughn was very clear, so I will stop there and just just leave it at that. This is not actual expenses at this point. Those will not be determined until later in the process. I hope that answers the questions you provided me. If not, I'm happy to follow up with you.
First of all, thank you so much for answering the questions to the best of your ability. But like, so for me, I did South Fort Myers graduation. I did Cypress graduation and I did Fort Myers graduation. And South Fort Myers had a very large graduation, but Cypress had a very small graduation, only 315 students. I think they need the billboard. I would like to see their campus utilized. So I mean, and it's not up to me to pick and choose, you know, who gets the advertising, but I think all our schools should be advertised. So I'm having a hard time with the, and I love South, don't get me wrong. Actually, the principal does his, he should be, he is the cheerleader of that school. So an awesome principal. So I just, that's my concern is it's that equitability. And and I know that some schools are underutilized and some, I mean, Lehigh Senior had a huge graduation class. So I'm having a hard time with that with the equitable things happening. So I'm, and this is one of them. Thank you.
Okay, and I think too that a lot of, I'm sorry, Ms. Gittens, the schools that are represented right here are, they were part of the grant writing as well. So they were engaged, which all the schools have opportunities to do that. And if you really look, branding is the identity. Who are we? What are we? It's the communication part. So every big organization, they have companies that do this for them because they are continuous doing this. That's what they do. And so I think that that is something that we really do need to have to make sure that we are, we always speak about communication and making sure that we're getting as much information out to community. This is the way that we do that, is getting it out there. And this grant, and I really think it's great that they were able to get this grant because that takes work to, you know, to get these grants. So I definitely will be supporting grants. So, I definitely will be supporting this as well. Ms. Gittens, please.
Okay. So, here's my question. In the item as it's listed in the agenda, under public content, there's a line that says, "Sir, these services for advertising, marketing to attract a diverse student population at the seven district schools who currently receive I-Dare Magnet grant funding." Does everyone see that? It's in the dead center of that paragraph. So, that's where I have a question. On one hand, we're working on proximity and, you know, equalizing schools and the resources and all of that. And I guess, so, one of my main questions is, how, when we're talking about competing for enrollment and proximity, how do we either marry those two? How do those two, what do those two have to do with each other? Does that, and through the chair, may I ask the superintendent?
Thank you.
For Mayor Gittens, that's a great question. So, may we clarify that you're asking about how proximity and how, a movement in terms of a proximity plan to some other type of process. And what we've been talking, and what we've been privately talking about, one-on-one with board members, and I believe addressed slightly publicly, we have, and how this fits together. Right now, we don't have a proximity plan. We have a plan that was developed by Davis Demographics. We know we have maps, and we have some ideas. I've shared with all of you individually that the next step in that process is a strong community engagement process, which we are going to bring forward to a workshop so that you can approve a calendar, upping the dates related to when staff originally said, "The earliest possible date for proximity could be far off into the future." So, I would say that right now, what we have is the system that we have. And in the meantime, this grant was developed with our schools who chose to participate. I have Terry Kennedy in the back, if, if we need her, who could talk about how the grant came into being, so that we can understand why some of these numbers are the way that they are. But right now, without a change in how we're going to enroll students in our school buildings, and the level of choice that we're offering, and other things, I think we really need to be cognizant of how our schools are competing for their student bodies. And that's what, this to some extent allows them to do that.
And it's okay. You know, you don't need to have someone come up. I just, it's just a question in my mind that we're saying proximity, or basically neighborhood schools. And on the other hand, we're talking about attracting students to specific schools that are magnets.
Madam-
That's where I have the-
So, Madam Chair, a point of clarification. Neighborhood schools is probably a difficult thing for you to attribute to me at this point. I know as a board, you've had those conversations. But to the public listening, I think it's really important that we are coming into a community engagement around a proximity process. And there has been no decisions that have been made. We want to engage the community, or the board first, so we can approve the timelines, and then begin with an engagement process with the community, so we can look at what might be the next best steps forward between now and January. So, we might be able to be in a position to make a recommendation to this board. I just, I want to be, I just want to be careful right now, because this is, could be news to individuals who are listening. And I just think it's important that they know that we are going to spend time with community in order to drive and get a better understanding of what they're looking for in that process.
And may I just finish off-
Thank you. Yes.
-by saying, and before you arrived, we did have the proximity tours and the community involved, and the community was given a broad picture of this is what we're doing, and then it stopped. And now, we're at this point where we're saying, "We're going to regroup and go back out and do it again." And I honestly think with this, because it's basically the grant, that I could support the grant, I think where a lot of people are coming from, is that just continuing to, you know, review and to do the same contract with the same company, we're going to keep doing the same thing and getting the same thing. And I think that's what the issue is. I've had questions from the community about how does, you know, the bid going out. Why do we always have the same, you know, the company, same company over and over again? That's some of the questions that I receive from the community. So, I'm done now.
Madam Chair, can I just clarify?
Yes, thank you.
Board Member Gittens, would you like me to answer that question, or is that just?
If you would care to.
I would love to. I would love to. But I just want to be careful. I'm in my first meeting with all of you publicly. I'm trying to make sure that I'm navigating all of you. For those of you in the audience, it's like having seven different dance partners. Some like to waltz, some like to jitterbug. I just got to keep learning. I got to learn, I have to continue to learn.
Electric slide, please.
So, when, so, very specifically, this was a contract that previously approved by the board that created a three-year deal. We are in the third year. Following the conclusion of this contract, an ITN or an RFQ would go out to look at if we were going, if we were going to continue those services. We would put it out back on the street, if you will, with an RFQ or an invitation to negotiate. We would put it back out so that we could then solicit potential other vendors to do this work.
Within the next year for the following, correct?
I don't want, I don't know the exact timeline. I'd have to confer with staff and get back to you.
Okay. Thank you.
So, I'm going to call in Ms. Vaughn, and then Ms. Jivinelli, and then I'm going to call for the vote. Ms. Vaughn, please.
Yeah, I just wanted to reiterate a couple of things and maybe add a piece or two. I did not say that we should have no contract for priority marketing or whomever is our selection to help with these, with these, you know, the social media, and the billboards, and the brochures, branding, and all of that. I did say that I oppose the amount, even with the, with the grant. You know, we get grant money, and I felt that it was kind of a last, not kind of, it was a last-minute thing sent today, not brought forth yesterday at all. We didn't get any kind of edification on the grant, anything meaningful that explained it. And today, we get a page of, "Oh, somebody pulled it. Let's supply more information." Okay? So, I have a problem with that, number one. As I said earlier, I have a problem with some of the things listed here, press releases, and I'm going to go back to the branding, because we have all kinds of templates. Are we going to look to rebrand the whole school district? I think not. The other thing that I really think is important to point out is how this is spent regarding social media monitoring. No matter what you say from the list that was sent today, there is, right now, an active investigation, a whistleblower complaint that came from, I'll read it again, filed in February. It claims communication staff was instructed to quote-unquote "spy" on Facebook posts and comments about the district while on the clock, potentially being paid taxpayer dollars to use taxpayer resources to spy on taxpayers. All right? It's an ongoing investigation. We don't know how it's going to turn out. Why not? And I did give administration, the superintendent's office, and it was a last-minute heads-up that I was going to bring this up, and this particular issue about the active investigation. Just today, we're looking at new ways to increase our oversight of vendors. Well, this isn't exactly the vendor, it's how the money is being spent, apparently through the vendor, because I also want, and I was involved with this, in the news report, during a school board meeting, board member Betsy Vaughn said, this is, goes back before April, I don't remember what month. I asked, "Is it somebody in-house that would be doing this monitoring?" Which I think is an invasion and of people's privacy, of people's rights to say what they want to say on their social media. We have had, I remember mentioning at this time, that going back a little bit over a year ago, I was warned by a high-level staff member that there had been complaints, or a complaint, about a remark that I made on Facebook, my private, not any kind of school board, but a private Facebook, and it was a joke between myself and my sister-in-law. Why would anybody be looking at that? Somebody sitting right here on the dais was chastised for liking somebody's post, somebody who was, let's say, viewed as not a friend to the district. Wasn't me, but what an invasion. I think that's a terrible way to spend the money. If this whistleblower complaint, which is still active, is seen to have no legal substantiality, is that even a legal word? It's not legally substantial?
Substantiated.
Then it changes things, doesn't it? But while this is an active investigation, and it comes from how this money is being spent, I'm sorry, but I am not, no, I'm not sorry. I'm proud that I'm not going to be supporting this. That's my final statement on this.
Jivinelli?
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Vaughn.
So, and I think we're not, at least I can say that, this has nothing to do with the grant for me. It has to do with the vendor and the allegations that have come forward where the vendor has been involved in some giving, you know, information to the district, and they're obviously looking at different things.
Ms. Prerie Bruno?
Okay. So, I want to be very, very careful. Ms. Vaughn was reading from an article. I listened very carefully, and that's just out there in the public. That was an article that she's reading. At this time, there is an active investigation, so we cannot assume that anything has been determined as of yet, because this is an ongoing active investigation. And I will caution the board, as I always do, we should not be discussing active investigations at the dais. Let's allow the process to be completed, and once that process is completed, we will know what occurred, and a recommendation will be made.
Thank you. So, for me, I would rather wait till the allegations are over and resolved before I would commit to giving them any more money at this point in time, the vendor. And that is really what I was just trying to say. I think that, because the grant belongs to the district, it doesn't belong to any vendor. So, how we spend it, obviously, is part of the grant. And if it's branding, that's great. But my, you know, I have to agree with Ms. Vaughn, the information that we received today was not forthcoming or transparent, if we received it after the fact regarding the grant. And you, for me, it's also doubled with, includes a grant. Let's just spend the grant and leave it at that. I would be good with that. But no, we're doubling it. We're spending the grant and spending another 200. So, now that's at 400. So, there's the amount. We didn't spend 400 last year based on the grant. It's, we've increased it. We've, we're giving them what was contracted, I believe, and now adding the grant to it. My, I would like to see this be, I don't know, pulled, and wait till the allegations are resolved, and then we can move forward.
Dr. Bernier, I just, I guess my question is, I hear what they're saying about the grants. However, we just spoke about equity and having funds for everybody else, but this grant is only for certain items, period. So, we just then told everybody else that we don't want them to have anything. So, if we're pulling the other money, do you have any comments or anything to share before we take a vote, please? And thank you.
Madam Chair, I'm listening intently, but I'm, I think your board members understand what you're telling, what you're saying, but I would need additional clarification as to what you're asking me to respond to.
I just was asking-
Can you restate your question?
Do you have any other, any other comments that you may want to speak on before we take a vote?
I think the only thing that has not come up in the course of the discussion is the limited amount of funds that are actually going to the communications department. The communications department is only receiving around 20%. Also, in an organization this large, $412,000, 211 of it from a grant is far less than 1% of our total balance. But it is the pleasure of the board what to do with this item, and my job as the, as your other employee, is to then administrate appropriately based upon your decision.
Thank you. Okay. With that being said, I am going to go ahead and call for the vote. Ms. Patrica?
Yes, please.
Thank you. Ms. Morgan?
Yes, please.
Ms. Vaughn?
No.
Ms. Gittens?
No.
Ms. Jivinelli?
Yeah, thank you.
Ms. Fisher?
Yes.
And yes. Four, three, motion carries. Thank you. We will, we will now recess the regular school board meeting at this time. As president of the Lee County School Board, Leasing Corporation, I would like to call this meeting of May 24, 2022, to order. The time is 8:05. Approval of the agenda as the order of business. This evening's agenda includes public comment, two secretaries' recommendation, other business adjournment. Do I hear a motion to adopt the agenda?
I'll move to adopt the agenda as listed.
Thank you, Ms. Fisher.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Ms. Jivinelli. There has been a motion to adopt the agenda by Ms. Fisher and second it by Ms. Jivinelli. All those in favor, this will be a hand vote. Ms. Patrica?
Yes, please.
Thank you. Ms. Morgan just left. Ms. Vaughn?
Yes.
Ms. Gittens?
Yes.
Ms. Jivinelli?
Yes.
Ms. Fisher?
Yes.
And yes. That's six with one missing. Motion carries. We will now take, sorry, we will now take public comments. Mr. Prerie Bruno, please address the agenda items of the public comment. Please, and thank you.
Yes, Madam Chair. At this time, you have the opportunity to participate in the public comment for this particular leasing corporation business. The only item that may be addressed is what's on the agenda for the leasing corporation.
Thank you.
I'm going to see if there's anyone who has signed up for this. Madam Chair, one minute, please. I do not see anyone sign up.
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on this item regarding the Lee County School Board Leasing Corporation only? That's the only item that we're speaking on? Not yet. Okay. Seeing none, we will move. We will now- Seeing none, we will move, we will now move to the secretary's recommendation. Dr. Brunnier, please present your recommendation.
Madam Chair, members of the board, approval of the minutes from the last Lee County Board Leasing Corporation meeting held on January 25, 2022.
Thank you. Directors, you have heard the secretary's recommendation to approve the minutes of the last Lee County School Board Leasing Corporation meeting held on January 25, 2022. I will now enter a motion. I need a motion, this sec, I need a motion.
I'll move that we approve the minutes of the Lee County School Board Leasing Corporation from January 25, 2022.
Thank you, Ms. Fisher, may I have a second, please?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Ms. Vaughn. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, I will call for the vote, and this will also be a hand vote. Ms. Patrica?
Yes, please.
Thank you. And, Ms. Vaughn?
Yes.
Ms. Kittens?
Yes.
Ms. Jevanelli?
Yes.
Ms. Fisher?
Yes.
And yes. Six to one with, Ms. Morgan absent.
Excuse me, Madam, Madam Chair, can you restate the vote count?
Six to, six to zero because she's missing.
Yep, six to zero with one missing, thank you.
Okay, item two, approval of the organization resolution of the Lee County School Board Leasing Corporation. Dr. Brunnier, please present your recommendation.
Madam Chair, members of the board, my recommendation is to approve the organizational resolution of the Lee County School Board Leasing Corporation.
Thank you. Directors, you have heard the secretary's recommendation to approve the organization resolution of the Lee County School Board Leasing Corporation for the election of officers. Debbie Jordan, President, Mary Fisher, Vice President, Christopher S. Brunnier, EDED, Secretary, Amy V. Decimore, ED, Treasurer. I will now entertain a motion.
I'll move that we approve the organizational resolution for the Lee County School Board Leasing Corporation.
Thank you. May I have a second, please?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Kittens. Is there any discussion, please? Seeing none, I will go ahead and call for the vote. Ms. Patrica?
Yes, please.
Thank you. Ms., Ms. Vaughn?
Yes.
Ms. Kittens?
Yes.
Ms. Jevanelli?
Yes.
Ms. Fisher?
Yes.
Ms. Morgan?
This is the leasing corp.
This is for the leasing corp.
Yes, please.
Thank you. And yes. Seven zero, motion carries. Okay, we will now move to other business. Please note that comments may only be made in your capacity as directors and/or officers of the corporation. Are there any comments, Ms. Fisher?
I have no comments at this time.
Jevanelli?
I have none.
Ms. Patrica?
No, thank you.
Ms. Kittens?
No.
Ms. Vaughn?
No comments.
Ms. Morgan?
I have none, thank you.
Dr. Brunnier?
No, ma'am, nothing.
Thank you, and I have none. At this point, having no other business to come before this board and seeing objection, this meeting is adjourned. At this time, I will reconvene the regular school board meeting of May 24, 2022. Public hearing. Dr. Brunnier, please present your recommendations for this evening's public hearing items.
Madam Chair, members of the board, there are three items. Item P1, approval to adopt the 2022-2023 Adult Code of Conduct in compliance with the changes and related rules, regulations and statutes to adopt best practices and provide transparency and accountability. The effective date of this adoption shall be May 25, 2022. Item P2, approval to adopt the 2022-2023 Code of Conduct pre-K grade five in compliance with the changes in related rules, regulations and statutes to adopt best practices and promote transparency and accountability. The effective date of this adoption shall be May 25, 2022. And finally, item P3, to adopt the 2022-2023 Code of Conduct grades six through 12 in compliance with the changes related in rules, regulations and statutes to adopt best practices and to promote transparency and accountability. The effective date of this adoption shall be May 25, 2022.
Thank you. We will now recess the regular school board meeting and open the public hearing items. As indicated, the public hearing this evening is to consider, number one, approval to adopt the 2022 through 2023 Adult Code of Conduct in compliance with changes and related rules, regulations and statutes to adopt best practices and to promote transparency and accountability. The effective date of this adoption shall be May 25, 2022. Item two, approval to adopt the 2022-2023 Code of Conduct pre-K through grade five in compliance with changes and related rules, regulations and statutes to adopt best practices and to promote transparency and accountability. The effective date of adoption shall be May 25, 2022. Item three, approval to adopt the 2022-2023 Code of Conduct grades six through 12 in compliance with changes and related rules, regulations and statutes to adopt best practices and to promote transparency and accountability. The effective date of this adoption shall be May 25, 2022. At this time, the public will be invited to speak on these three items. Again, these three items only, one, two and three. The time allowed for comments is three minutes. Is there, now you can see, is there anyone, is there anyone that would like to speak? If so, please go to the back. And if you will, please state your name prior to speaking. Thank you.
Tara Jenner. I know that in the Code of Conduct, it talks a little bit about accommodations and modifications in there. So, it's a little bit of an aside, but we were having the speakers in the back showing up on the screen, and we're not anymore. And so, that's why I had to keep moving back and forth, because I need to be able to liberate the people in the back of the room, and then I can't see the board members at the same time because I'm having to constantly do back and forth. And being able to pick up your verbal, non-verbal cues in response to the speakers is a key thing for me as a member of the public, evaluating your behavior and your responses to people since you don't seem to comment on what people say from this particular microphone. So, having said that, incorporating the new parental rights laws or any other law that comes down the line that isn't going to be officially enacted until a future date can be done by reference and with a hot link to the state statute. The purpose here, complying with the parental rights laws, is to give parents advance notice and information so they can make informed decisions. If you wait until after the school year and they've gone through all this and then you make a minor change here or there, they're not going to know about it. They're going to only read this 97-page document once, if ever. So, do it at the first, on the onset. You can actually get that in there now. If the law turns out not to end up being upheld after court action, the link will go nowhere or show that the law has been repealed or changed by judicial review. This is a no-brainer, people. You can get it out there. The key is giving the parents the information. And I also have noticed that too many times, both in the parental, I mean, excuse me, in the Code of Conduct as well as in our policies, you reference policy, you reference state statute, sometimes, but not all the time, and there's no reference to the Constitution, both the U.S. Constitution or the state constitution, which actually is what gives parents a clarification of what their rights are. It doesn't give them their rights, it gives them the clarification of what their rights are. We don't even need a parental bill of rights to have rights. We don't need your policy to have rights. It just makes it easier for people to know how to actually enforce and ensure that you implement those rights. So, again, incorporate by reference a hot link to the statute, do it now. And I'm surprised Ms. Patrica didn't complain about the number of spacing errors and other grammatical faux pas's that were in the document.
For the third time, I'm asking about placing the parental bill of rights in the Code of Conduct, for the third time. And you know, this is really a question of accountability and transparency to the families in the community, which is something that we have been coming to the podium now for over a year to express, that we don't feel that there is enough transparency. And yet, with regard to the Code of Conduct, when you have enough time to rectify this matter, to go ahead and vote to approve them is just once again saying to the public that you're not listening. So, once again, for the third time and for the second time tonight, there is plenty of time to approve these codes of conduct, and once again, I am asking for 1557 to be placed into the Code of Conduct. Thank you.
Hello again, Kristi DiVigili. I would like to echo my, to be, the two speakers before me. I understand this is a very large district, almost 100,000 students. I understand that you guys have a calendar and a timeline, but you also have the capability to make, to create two versions of this, one that has the laws in it and one that doesn't. And then, guess what? There were like 100 meetings in 2020. So many of them were special meetings. 2021 had special meetings then, too. There is no reason why we can't have one special meeting in July after this has gone into place, or hasn't, or whatever. And if you, I mean, what Denise said, take some, give us an inch here. We've been asking for even just the parental bill of rights to be displayed in the Code of Conduct. It's over 90 pages long. You could have included one page for the parents that clearly explains what their already existing rights are. You know, if you don't want there to be such an adversarial relationship between the board and the community, a little bit of transparency, a little bit of give every now and then is what's required. This is one of those situations that you could easily appease the community, more specifically the parents. The parents who are, are going to, when it comes to orientation week or orientation night, not be able to access their child's focus until they sign their rights away and read and pretend like they've read through a 90-page document in order to do so. I was one of those parents. Like, where are the checks and balances there? You know, if you want us to read this book, if you want parents to be engaged in this process, act like it. And you could start by adding the parental bill of rights in there, adding the current legis, the legislation that's going to go into effect in July. If it doesn't go into effect, make two of them. It's not that hard. I've seen you guys do a lot, a lot more in a lot less time. Please consider what we've been asking you here tonight. Thank you so much.
Okay, or is there any other, is there anyone else that would like to speak? Okay, seeing none, I will now close this public hearing and reconvene the regular school board meeting of May 24, 2022. Dr. Brunnier, please restate your recommendations for this evening's public hearing items one more time. And if you would, do it one at a time, please.
Do we have opportunity to have discussion?
Yes, you do.
In between?
Yes, yes.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. P1, approve to adopt the 2022-2023 Adult Code of Conduct in compliance with the changes in related rules, regulations and statutes to adopt best practices and to promote transparency and accountability. The effective date of this adoption shall be May 25, 2022.
Thank you. You have heard the superintendent's recommendation that the board approves to adopt the 2022-2023 Adult Code of Conduct in compliance with changes in related rules, regulations and statutes to adopt best practices and promote transparency and accountability. The effective date of the adoption shall be May 25, 2022. Board members, is there a motion to approve? Ms. Morgan?
I move we approve the superintendent's recommendation to adopt the 2022-2023 Adult Code of Conduct. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms., okay, Ms. Jevanelli? Okay, now, is there discussion? And Ms. Jevanelli, you?
I don't have discussion on this one, it's the other two, so.
Okay. Is there any discussion on this particular one?
Okay, let me make sure.
This is item one.
Just the adult?
This is, that is correct, the adults.
Okay. No.
Nope, okay. So, if you would then, seeing no discussion, please record your vote. Okay, seven zero, motion carries. Dr. Brunnier, will you restate your recommendation for item two?
Madam President, members of the board, P2, approval to adopt the 2022-2023 Code of Conduct pre-K through grade five in compliance with the changes in related rules, regulations and statutes to adopt best practices and to promote transparency and accountability. The effective date of this adoption shall be May 25, 2022.
Thank you. You have heard the superintendent's recommendation that the board approve to adopt the 2022-2023 Code of Conduct pre-K through grade five in compliance with changes in related rules, regulations and statute to adopt best practices and to promote transparency and accountability. The effective dates of this adoption shall be May 25, 2022. Board members, is there a motion to approve? Ms. Fisher?
Yes, I'll move that we adopt the superintendent's recommendation to approve the Code of Conduct pre-K through five.
Okay, and second it?
I'll second it.
By Ms. Morgan, okay. So, moved by Ms. Fisher and seconded by Ms., I'm sorry, moved by Ms. Fisher and seconded by Ms. Morgan, and discussion, Ms. Jevanelli? Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Fisher.
Okay, so, in the pre-K through five Code of Conduct.
Yes, please.
On page 15, excuse me. Page 15 and 16 is notification of parental rights. Federal and state law provides parents and guardians of following rights. And then, at the bottom of page 16, there is a link for the parent bill of rights, parental rights in education and additional resources through the school district of Lee County parent portal.
You okay?
Just wanted to let, know that, that that's in there.
Thank you. Ms. Jevanelli, did you have?
Yeah, so, when you click on that link, however, it does not take you to the actual Parents' Bill of Rights, it takes you to different things on, at the district. My, my question is actually for Attorney Bruno. Please explain that there's, we're going to have an equity guide, and my question is, and how we're going to arrive at that equity guide through community committees, I believe. And, but, the equity guide, could the parental rights law actually be in that equity guide when they're working on that?
Mr. Prebbrunno?
So, yes, we're going to have an equity guide, and yes, there should be some reference to the Parents' Bill of Rights in the equity guide, so. And then, there is going to be a community feedback group that'll be working with the administration in reviewing, revising and providing recommendation on that equity guide.
Thank you.
And I just wanted to let, go ahead, Ms. Fisher.
Okay, and I just wanted to conclude that there is a disclaimer in here that says the design of this page will be enhanced visually to draw attention to the parent portal, so.
This is still a work in progress.
Thank you, and the link does go to the parental, Parents' Bill of Rights? It goes right to the, right to the rights? Were you? Where you click on it right here, and it has the Parents' Bill of Rights, Chapter 1014 Florida statute consisting of, it's right there. If you click on there. Ms. Gittens, please.
Okay, so when I clicked on it, it took me to the parent portal. Is that correct?
Correct.
And the parent portal in the top right corner says Focus Parent Portal Log In. My concern is why would it not just be open to every parent or every community member that clicks on there that wants to know what is the parental bill of rights? Why, because what if a parent doesn't even, if it's not a parent, or someone wants to see, what is this law? So why can't this be linked directly to and available to anyone who does not necessarily have access to Focus Log In?
Mr. Preberno, because when you do click on that, it takes you to everything pertaining to any kind of information that you may, parent university, Parents' Bill of Rights, Parents, this. So not necessarily do you have to have Focus, anybody can get on there, because I'm not on Focus, and I can go right to that. So can, can you address that?
May I finish my comment? Okay, so, so my thing is, when you click on it, you get this page with multiple areas. All I'm saying is, let's simplify it and have that one click lead to one thing. And if you, I have to go through this whole list of A through whatever to find which item I want. This is what I'm talking about with our website that makes it very difficult to manipulate, because what if I don't know where to go on here? Just one click for one click. Parent Bill of Rights takes you to the Parent Bill of Rights.
Correct, that's what I assumed.
Keep it simple.
I'm not a, yeah, I'm not a designer, so I would not know, because we would need a single, singler button for every single one of these items.
No, you would not, no, I'm not saying that. I'm saying that when you go back to this first page, right, and it says on page 16, the Parents' Bill of Rights, I should be able to just go click, and the next thing my eyes see is the Parent Bill of Rights. It's just that simple. It's not, you know, you don't have to write a program for it. You just link the click to that page.
Just click them. I hear you. Ms. Vaughn?
Yeah, I'm a fan of the links throughout. As a matter of fact, if I'd been writing this, I probably would have condensed a lot of the, a lot of the print in it and said, for further information, blah, blah, and here's, here's the, here's the link. So I'm, I'm with Ms. Gittens on, on that. All of you know my ideological stance, even though we're nonpartisan, but I don't see the problem with just a one click. Why not?
So Dr. Bernier, this would come back to you all, because that would have to just be changed in there and make it simplistic. Where, in the red where it says Parent Bill of Rights, Parental Rights in Education.
Madam Chair, members of the board, I think I have the question for me is, is this a possible fix for our Code of Conduct before going to print? That is a very easy fix for us. We could make the links to the parental bill of rights go directly to the page in the portal, right? So they don't have to then land on the portal and scroll down, but we'll also keep the link to the parent portal, so they can have all the information that they wanted as well. But a direct link, I'm looking at Dwayne, I just, it's, it's a really relatively simple fix for where that link lands, this is, if you just nod your head for me, so, thank you. So if you, as a superintendent, this is a pretty easy decision.
Yeah, it makes sense. Okay, Ms. Givinelli?
Do we need to give a directive for the superintendent to add that link, or at this point?
Madam Chair, what do you want?
Could we please ask you to, if everybody else is in agreement of this, have that?
I'm not your parliamentarian, so I'm going to defer to Kathy DePuy Bruno. I think you probably should amend your motion. That would provide me the direction that we would approve the Code of Conduct, and then I would have the direction to change this particular item so that I can meet your expectations.
Madam Chair?
Ms. Gittens?
May I please make an amendment to the motion that's on the floor to add that there will be a singular link? Did you hear me?
Yes.
That there will be a single link from the parent portal to the Parents' Bill of Rights, one click, and there will be the additional click for, what did you say? To the parent portal list. And I know I didn't say that concisely.
Okay, so you'd like to make, amend the motion to have the Parents' Bill of Rights, Parental Rights in Education with one click that would take you right to the Parental Rights Bill, and also keeping with the, the parent portal as well.
Yes, so there would be two clicks.
Two clicks, two links. So, go ahead, Ms.
One more question, just, is that a question?
There's a, we have a motion.
There's an amendment on the floor, we need a second, if there's a second.
I'll second it.
Okay, thank you. Now we have a conversation.
Yeah, my apology, my apology. I just want to make sure, too, that what we're voting on tonight, there's no attached, and this is a disclaimer, there's no attached equity guide at this time, correct?
No.
That's in these, embedded in these two Code of Conducts. Thank you.
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
So could we have a vote on that then?
Vote on the amendment.
Yes, a vote on the amendment, which Ms. Gittens had stated, seconded by Ms. Givinelli, and can we have a hand vote? Ms. Morgan?
Aye.
Ms. Vaughn?
Yes.
Ms. Gittens?
Yes.
Ms. Patrica?
Yes, please.
Ms. Givinelli?
Yes.
Ms. Fisher?
Yes.
And yes. Thank you. Okay, seven, okay, and then, Ms., Thomas, did you get that motion? Or, you did get it? Thank you so much, appreciate it. Dr. Bernier?
Now, Ms. Jordan, you need to have a vote on the motion as amended.
Oh, sorry.
Now you're going to have a vote on the recommendation as amended.
Okay. May I have a motion on the amended motion as stated?
Whatever you said.
Ms. Morgan?
I move we approve the superintendent's recommendation to adopt the 2022-2023 Code of Conduct pre-K, grade five, as amended.
And I second.
Thank you, and thank you, Ms. Gittens. Now, is there any discussion? No discussion. May we have a vote? Ms. Morgan?
Aye.
Ms. Vaughn?
Yes.
Ms. Gittens?
Yes.
Ms. Patrica?
Yes, please.
Thank you. Ms. Givinelli?
Yes.
Ms. Fisher?
Yes.
And yes, so motion carries, thank you. And again, Ms., Thomas, did you get that one too? Thank you so much. Okay, Dr. Bernier, will you please restate your recommendation for item three? Please.
Madam President, members of the board, I'm sorry, Madam Chair, members of the board, P3, approval to adopt the 2022-2023 Code of Conduct grades six through 12 in compliance with the changes in related rules, regulations, and statutes to adopt best practices and to promote transparency and accountability. The effective date of this adoption shall be May 25, 2022.
Thank you. You have heard the superintendent's recommendation that the board approved to adopt the 2022-2023 Code of Conduct grades six through 12 in compliance with changes in related rules and regulations and statutes to adopt best practices and to promote transparency and accountability. The effective date of this adoption shall be May 25, 2022. Board members, is there a motion to approve?
I move we have. I'll move to approve the superintendent's recommendation that we adopt the Code of Conduct six through 12. Thank you.
Ms. Gittens, you said second?
I'll second it, and.
Thank you, and discussion.
Then I would like to amend the motion as we amended the last one. I'd like to amend the superintendent's motion to add that there be a one-link button to the Parents' Bill of Rights, and the additional button would link to the parent portal.
Okay, may I have a?
Say that right?
Yes, you did, that was good. May I have a second, please?
I'll second that.
Okay, is there any discussion on that one? CNN, may I get a hand vote on the amended motion as stated by Ms. Gittens to add the additional link to the Parents' Bill of Rights, Parent Rights in Education, to its own link, as well as the, the parent portal having it their link as well?
Aye.
Thank you, Ms., Ms. Morgan? Ms. Vaughn?
Yes.
Ms. Gittens?
Yes.
Ms. Givinelli?
Yes.
Oh, Ms. Patrica?
Yes, please.
Thank you. Ms. Fisher?
Yes.
And yes. Seven zero, and now I need to make a motion, I need to take a vote on the amend, on the amended motion. A lot of amendments here. May I get someone to?
Okay, I think it's that I would like to make the motion that we accept the superintendent's
Recommendation.
Recommendation with the amendment as previously stated and voted on. Is that all right?
Yes, thank you.
She's looking at me funny.
Okay, so what Ms. Gittens has says, that she would like to recommend, the superintendent's recommendation that the board approve the adopted 2022-2023 Code of Conduct grades six through 12 with compliance with changes in related rules, regulations, with the amended motion.
As amended.
As amended. Thank you, Ms. Gittens. And we have a second on that one? Thank you, Ms. Morgan. Ms. Thomas?
Madam Chair, may I make a point of order?
Yes, please.
I believe this is the second time that we have made and seconded a motion when there's already an amended motion on the table. All we need to do is vote on the underlying motion on the table that has been amended.
We had, we voted to amend the motion, and now we're voting for the amended motion.
What Ms. Patrica is saying, that we got a second with the, when we did the recommendation with the amendment. It's a point of order that she called, Madam Chair, you can go ahead and rule on point of order. Parliamentary procedure-wise, I've got to check my Robert's Rules of Order to be able to advise, but I don't think it's inconsequential. We can move forward with the motion and vote on it.
Thank you, so we'll go ahead and take a vote on this then? Ms. Morgan? Ms. Morgan? Thank you. I wasn't sure which way I was starting. Ms. Morgan? Ms. Vaughn? Ms. Gittens?
Yes. I didn't say anything.
Vaughn?
I opened my mouth and you were calling.
I was reading your lips. Yes. Vaughn? Thank you. Ms. Patrica?
Yes, please.
Thank you.
Ms. Givinelli?
Yes.
Ms. Fisher?
Yes.
And yes. Seven zero, motion carries. I apologize, I've said your names so many times, I, I'm not sure whose name I'm saying. And thank you, Dr. Bernier, for going through all this with us. Next, we've made it through that, so next on the agenda will be board member comments, and I will start with Ms. Fisher, please.
Okay, so I, I did my comments this afternoon, and I just want to wish Island Coast good luck with their championship baseball game tonight. And I also, as I thanked staff and, and our parents, I neglected one group of people, and that is our secretaries, our assistants, and our office workers, who keep the ball rolling for us all the time, and will continue to work with us during the summer, and I just want to thank them for their work and dedication also. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fisher. Ms. Givinelli?
Yes, I would like to thank Dr. Savage for his leadership. I, I know that I, I think I might have mentioned it at a workshop, but I just wanted to say it one more time. And then, at the same time, welcome Dr. Bernier here for his first meeting, and I look forward to the many more. And I just want to congratulate the class of 2022, and all the staff, and, and, and to all the employees, for those who get the summer break and the summer off, enjoy your summer, make sure you get plenty of rest and relaxation. We need you back here, strong and ready to go in August. So, and those that are working through the summer, thank you for all your hard work through this year, and I look forward to working with everyone again for 2023 school year. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Givinelli. Ms. Patrica, please?
I have no comments, thank you.
Thank you. Let's see, Ms. Gittens?
Okay, I have a couple of comments to make. One of the speakers tonight talked about what difference did we make during the time that we're out in the community and doing whatever. So I'm going to read my comment briefly. I listened to and guided parents and community and members and employees to the processes and procedures to find solutions to their issues according to policy and protocol. I have listened to tearful parents and employees, as well as joyous ones. My attendance at schools is a part of supporting and encouraging all students and employees. So that is, besides all the things we mentioned this afternoon with the graduations and all of that. My last comment has to do with the self-evaluation, and I entitled this, the self-evaluation versus sunshine law. Our evaluation is done once a year. If you want to see a change in the conversation that we have, then contact Tallahassee. This is where you can write letters to the governor, to the legislators, talk to them about the sunshine law. The sunshine law is not required for legislators that make the major laws that we all have to abide by. So it would maybe behoove some people to talk to them about why it is necessary for us at this level. I do understand what respect and dignity are, and what they look like, and how they feel, and I've heard many times in the last several weeks rhetoric about how this board is so chaotic. Every time I heard the word, I cringed. The board is in chaos. Well, if you look up chaos, it means confusion, mayhem, bedlam, pandemonium, madness, havoc, turmoil. I don't think you see that sitting up here. We have just tonight approved 58 items that directly affect the education of close to 100,000 students and over 12,000 employees, and manage a $1.9 billion taxpayer dollars in our budget. There's no confusion. I know where my job is, they know what their job is. There's no mayhem, there's no bedlam, pandemonium, madness, or turmoil. Sometimes, very often angst, fear of retaliation, and being erased and overlooked and ignored. Not me individual, individually, but a large portion of students and staff at times. There is no, there is no statute on how, I'm sorry, messed up here, no statute we raise how, that we must like each other. There's no statute that says I have to like you, okay? I raised my hand and I said I will follow the laws and the statutes of the state of Florida. Doesn't say I have to like you. I'm not saying I don't, but I don't have to, if I don't want to. But the statute says I have to do the work of the district. I feel we do the work of the district. Again, 58 items that have affected 100,000 students, 12,000 employees, and a $1.9 billion taxpayer budget. I know I am not liked by some, but that's not even important. Doing the work is important. We've done the work, we do the work. We don't always agree, but we approved 58 items tonight. Thank you, and congratulations to all the graduates. Congratulations to the teachers that you made it through this year, almost, it's almost done. And we hope and pray that you will come back, teachers, bus drivers, and everybody relaxed and ready, and please come back to us in the fall. Thank you very much, and good night.
Ms. Vaughn?
Actually, I'd like to start with something that may seem kind of random after some of the things that we've been talking about, but it's a news article I read, and I would like to send kudos to the city of Cape Coral. The news article that I read is that Cape Coral is going to, in the next five years, install 15 miles of sidewalks near our schools. And this is something many of us have talked about because it's, you know, the bus stops, if there's no sidewalk, we've had some tragedies and near tragedies, and I think this is going to help tremendously with the safety issues. And now I'm hoping, and I know Lehigh Acres is in a different, I don't know how to say it, like a different kind of organization, and hopefully the county commissioners and others that are responsible for that will step up to the plate because we have tremendous growth in this county, and it really, really bothers me that apparently there's no kind of legislation, the way, you know, I came from some of your favorite state, New Jersey, that when new schools were erected and new infrastructure, that everything, you know, parks or whatever came along with that. And we have builders that build, and they really don't take any of that into consideration because they don't have to, and it's more profit for them. So kudos to Cape Coral, and I'm hoping that builders keep in mind that this is their civic duty to ensure the safety of our children and just general pedestrians, and I hope to see more sidewalks near our schools. I already sent out kudos to the graduates, and I'm just going to mention it one more time, graduates, whatever you're doing next year, you know, starting today. And, you know, somebody tell the graduates that we all sent those kudos and good wishes to them, because if I were to bet, maybe four graduates are listening tonight to what we have to say. But anyway, we do wish you well. And I also send my best wishes to all employees. I know some of you, especially district employees, worked throughout the summer, and I mentioned earlier that many of their teachers either work throughout the summer, second or third job, or I know a few of my teacher friends that haven't yet retired are actually already working on summer projects for professional development, looking ahead to preparing new lesson plans based on the shorter class period, adapting what they have. And so I also want to say, all of you that still have the notion how wonderful a job it is to teach because they get the summer off, I don't know all that many teachers that have the summer off. As I said, they're either working another job, or I know, I don't remember any summers, any, that I wasn't either doing district curriculum writing or preparing for new subjects that I was going to be teaching, or tweaking, tweaking or attending college board workshops. So teachers always have those kinds of things on their mind. So it is a wonderful job, and they are lucky to have it, but it's not because they have the summers off. Let's see, Dr. Bernier has been our superintendent now for eight days. Oh, I just thought of the Beatles song, "Eight Days a Week." How many days does it feel like, may I ask?
Do you have some accurate description?
Before you answer, someone lock the doors.
I'm probably not allowed to ask you that, I'm not following protocol here, but I think you're off to a great start. I see Dr. Savage is sitting back there humming a little tune in his head. Anyway, moving on, one other thing that I didn't mention this afternoon was that I was pleased to be able to get to two senior awards ceremonies in the past week and a half, but not wearing my school board member hat. As a matter of fact, in one of them, I had to make a correction as I was introduced as school board member from, you know, District Six. I said, "No, I am wearing the hat of the Scholarship Chair of the Haitian-American Community Coalition." And like so many other groups, it's really amazing to hear all of the different community groups and memorial scholarships and all of that. And I know we're a very small organization relatively, but we were very pleased to give out four $1,000 academic scholarships, and it just happened this year, and we actually were quizzed about it by a couple of people on social media. Where are the boys? Where are the male students? All four of them were young ladies. Guys, you're gonna, they're gonna need to start. They hadn't put in the number, maybe 20% of the applications came from young men. And that may be actually a trend, especially among minority students, minority males. And so maybe that's something we can think about, you know, to get more of the minority males to participate in those kinds of things. And actually, it was four different schools, and it's a joy to me to be able to hand out those scholarships to Haitian heritage students. And one of our top, of these top students was born in Haiti. And so she started out, you know, she and her parents coming to the U.S. And when I read essays and I look at all of the scholarship applications, and then we have others that look at the, kind of the second round, we've had students that came to the U.S. as junior high or middle school students and rise to the top of their class with all kinds of honors and all kinds of community involvement. And the final thing I'm going to say, to sing my kudos to a group that I really love, is that, I'm trying to remember if all four of the young ladies, or at least three of the four, were going into some medical field, and often it's because they were looking back at relatives they had, people that they knew that didn't have proper medical care. And so, you know, I know it's not unique to the Haitian-American population, but it's one that I'm very familiar with, and I couldn't let this time pass without singing praises to those and to all of our wonderful, especially those community scholarships that recognize some of the things that might not be recognized in the same way by some of the larger scholarships. So, good night from me.
Thank you, Ms. Vaughn. Ms. Morgan?
And I'm going to keep you from the Island Coast High School game because I do have comments this evening. First of all, I want to compliment staff. The revised weekly update, I thought was terrific. I want to congratulate staff for their, exceeding their enrollment targets in the middle school summer novel reading program. There were four new programs highlighted that I would like the community to hear about. I assume they were funded by ESAR. One is Scholastic Books for Elementary Students, Elementary Live Science Labs, Summer Science Labs for Fourth Graders, a national development program geared towards rigorous high-level academic expanded learning. I also enjoy the highlights from the school levels. You know, we can't get to all the schools, so it's just fun to see, you know, what people choose, what schools choose to highlight about their weeks. I also have been wanting to speak about the fact, you know, I always talk about partnerships, that's a big thing for me. I want to mention the Harms Marsh, Harms Marsh Middle School relationship with the East Lee County Chamber. They had a gala this winter recognizing teachers. They are providing funding for a summer camp at Harms Marsh Middle School, and they are planning a trip to Tallahassee during session in 2023 for students from Harms Marsh Middle School. We talk about, you know, the diverse opportunities that our schools have and the diverse resources. And I will continue to say that there are people in the community who may not be able to do the same things for every school, but what they do for certain schools can make a difference. Now, that takes me to the board meeting, and there are more partnerships in the board meeting that we, or in the agenda that we approved today. Operating summer programs for students on our campuses, YMCA, Southwest Florida, IMAG History and Science Center, and the Boys and Girls Clubs of Lee County. These are people stepping up to help us recover from what we have been through the past couple of years. When you see these people in the community, please thank them for their support of our students. I also want to mention that we approved three dental partnerships for students needing internships for accreditation. Now that I've talked about what we've done, I want to mention something that Ms. Javonelli brought up this afternoon, talking about partnerships going forward. She said that we should be looking at some relief for traditional hires moving to Lee County in terms of finding a place to live, renting. And that's far from a simple problem, but I think, given the governor's initiative regarding home purchases, that the time may be right to form a task force with the Horizon Council, Lee Health, Lee County School District, Police and Sheriff, Higher Education, to address the needs of first responders and to start talking about advocating as a team at the state level. So I want to thank you for that. Many of you talked about graduations today. I attended the non-traditional graduations, and I was struck by the comments you all made about the prevalence of COVID in your graduation speeches. I heard very little of that at the charter, adult ed, and virtual school graduations. Their barriers have not changed since pre-COVID. They are still talking about the same health, wellness, social issues, economic issues. There was one gal whose mother was homeschooling her until the mother passed when the child was six years old. That child had no form of schooling after that age. The reason she was receiving her GED was because an older sibling spouse encouraged her to enroll in the GED program. I mean, that's the kind, I mean, there are so many underlying social, economic issues in this community that are barriers to students. We've learned a lot with COVID about things that we can do differently, but we need to be doing more. So let's see. That brings me to my final comment regarding the mass murder of children in Texas. I heard the governor quoted as saying, "This is a terrible tragedy." And we will hear from him and others, the trite and tired hearts and prayers for the children and the families. Where are the political leaders who can say either our policies or our administration of those policies is failing? We need to ask serious questions about the role of our legislators, our politicians, their role, responsibility, and accountability for these kinds of tragedies. It is not our problem alone to solve. And those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Morgan. I am going to have, Miguel, thank you so much for being here this evening, and if you have some comments to share, I know you graduated, so you might want to share, you know, what you've heard here today, what you've thought about it, what your plans are, and...
Yeah, so to begin with, I want to say thank you for inviting me. It's been quite an experience. I never imagined our Lee County School Board being, you know, this way. Or, and also I want to say thank you to all the parents and grandparents that come here and stand up for your kids or grandkids. I really appreciate that you want to come and give your time. I might not agree with all the stuff you're fighting for, but I can understand where you're coming from in a standpoint of caring. So thank you for all of you that stood here for three hours so far. So now, the other comment that I have is, you know, thank you for inviting me to the board, and welcome to our new superintendent. It's going to be challenging, I know our high school system here in Lee County has a lot of stuff to improve, but going to what lady here to my left said, that some kids come here, you know, 11th, 12th grade, I came to the United States three years ago. I came and started, three years ago.
Three years, wow.
Yeah, three years ago, and, you know, I'm a clear example that Lee County does a lot of good stuff, and for me, taught me a language, how to write it, how to understand it, how to say my ideas clearly in a way that I can, everybody can understand me. Also, being recipient of one of many, many, many Lee County School Scholarship, Scholarship, I got the Richard Haggie Scholarship for $2,000, going to help me take the next level to college and keep doing what I like to do the best, and that's learning and being better every day. So for that, I thank you, everybody, everyone here in the school board, because I know without your hard work, the man that's over there, you know, through all those years, it's like, oh, I know, I'm from somewhere. You know, as a student, you don't get to see your faces as much, and I didn't know you did all this work, you know, all the legislation you're going through, all the changes you have to make. And for me, it's, you know, an enlightening experience to see your hard work and how much you care about our community, our school system, and most importantly, our future, the future of Lee County, which it might not be me because I'm out of the system now. It went so long, three days. But now that I'm out of the system, we care about the futures. I have a brother in ninth grade and know kids in good hands because you're working really hard to make this county better every night and every day. So thank you very much, and thank you for everybody being here. Have a great night.
Well, Miguel, again, I want to thank you and the gentleman that you're looking at. You did see him and meet him downtown. I was so impressed by you when I met you at South and then downtown again. I was like, okay, we got to find this kid, we got to get him over here, because you are just very, I was very impressed by you and just your story and everything about you, and thank you for sharing that with us. See, I'm like, me? Me all set here? See, you're making me, you're making me upset here. But I appreciate what everyone else has said here tonight, and I just want to thank the, all of the staff and the schools. This is our last meeting before school is over. Thank you for caring for our children. Thank you for caring for all my grandchildren, nieces, nephews, my whole entire family that's in the district because you make them better, and I really appreciate that. And to our graduates, thank you, you know, congratulations, and I wish you the very best. And you just, yeah, you're a good kid. And Mr. Preet Burnow.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to clarify with regards to a second when you have the amended motion that is not required. I look back to an email that I sent the board in May of 2021 with the instructions. So we want to, I just want to clarify that since that was brought up. In addition, we could have done something different, just do a friendly amendment. But however, the board has been trained with doing amendments this way. I prefer to do it that way so that we don't have any confusions. In addition, Robert's rules does have different rules when you have a board that is less than 12. It allows for more flexibility and latitude with formalities to ensure that the business of the board is not interrupted and we can move forward. So when I say it's inconsequential, it's because of that rule to allow us to move forward with our business without getting stuck on formalities. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Preet Burnow. Dr. Bernier, this is your first action meeting. Comments, please.
Well, first, to our student guests, incredible story. And thank you for being an example of the work that the school system can do. I think, I told all of this, I wanted it to be my last job, but I think you found your next superintendent. We just have to wait a couple of years, and I think he's ready. Very impressive, very impressive. I want to just echo some sentiments regarding our educators, our principals, our staff out at schools. It has been, no matter where you've been during this period of time, whether you were in the state of Florida or the state of Nevada, it has been a trying time. And I look forward to the summer for our teachers, and Ms. Vaughn is absolutely correct. They have second jobs, they're going to be attending tons of staff development, they're going to be working with Florida Best Standards. We're going to be adopting additional, we're adopting some curriculum materials that's going to require them to dig in and study and make sure that they're prepared for their lessons coming into the fall. But I share this with principals, and I share it with our staff pretty regularly. Our students are going to go home and recharge, and they're going to be back in August. So to the staff present here, as well as to the staff listening at home, more to the principals that I've spoken to and the staffs I've been able to reach. I think it's really important that we stress that when you're going to take care of other people, the first, most important thing is to take care of yourself. So I hope this summer they find the time to relax, find a beach or a mountain or a hiking trail or whatever it is that recharges them. And to our students going off to college, I hope they'll do the same because the level of effort will be required of everyone as we come back in the fall. So those are my, sort of my comments around graduation because it's already been said. I do want to highlight a particular issue that's coming up in the community, and that's the Franklin Park School that is being renovated. We talk often about our schools that are new and coming online, and we don't talk about the necessity of going back into our community to look at schools that have outlived their useful lifespan. And I appreciate the forward-thinking of this school district and this board to look at those particular issues because young people deserve the very best educational environments we can provide and not just where growth is occurring. All that, that's a priority for this board, I understand that. But we have to come back and we have to look at learning environments that have outlived their, by state law as well, outlived their usefulness. So I know Franklin Park's going to have to swing to a portable site or a swing site, but they are very excited after leaving the zero completion meeting. They're very excited about the opportunity of their new school building when they get back, and will be using it again to repeat that process for another site as well. To the Assembly Required Team and the Panther Force, I really love those names, the young people that received it here earlier today who competed in the robotics and the drone competitions. Teamwork, STEM, empowerment, engagement, problem solving, resilience, grit, challenging, and challenges that occur without you even realizing that your robot's going to break down and you're going to fix it within 10 minutes to get it back out on the stage. Really amazing work that our young people are involved in with STEM across this district. To the board, thank you for the support in the workshop on Monday related to restructuring how a cabinet meets here so that we can be better prepared and not providing information at the last minute to board members who need that information in advance to be prepared not only for themselves, but for their constituency. And last, but not least, tonight, scheduled at 7:00 p.m., which has been rain delayed and lightning delayed till 9:15. Somebody's looking out for the new superintendent. I'm going to have the opportunity to leave here tonight and go see Island Coast compete against Jensen Beach for the state title in baseball. And again, there, what you learn inside the lines is applicable outside the lines. If athletes are being taught correctly, the lessons they learn about rule-following, the rules of the game, and sportsmanship apply in everything that they do as a later adult and community member. So just thank you to everyone, and thank you to this board for an amazing first week. Really have enjoyed it and continue to look forward to our additional work together. Thank you.
Great, thank you, thank you. The next scheduled meeting of the board is on Monday, June 13. There will be a board workshop at 12:00 p.m. On Tuesday, June 14, there will be a board briefing at 1:00 p.m., followed by an action meeting at 6:00 p.m. Seeing no other, at this point, having no other business to come before this body, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you, and have a safe evening.